Sorry, the regular order of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors for August 24th, 2022 is called to order. June, please call the roll.
Mr. Barca?
Present.
Ms. Buckner?
Here.
Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Ms. Ford?
Here.
Mr. Hogan? Dr. Jones?
Present.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Here. Actually, before I go to agenda approval, we need to approve him. Okay. Mr. Hogan has requested an excused absence tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to approve his absence.
Some of.
Second.
June, will you call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. Are there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda?
Some of.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. June, please call the roll.
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes. The motion passes. June, what were the outstanding action items from the last meeting?
I believe that all action items have been resolved except for the sixth grade RTI scores. And that is being resolved for this week. Is that correct? Okay, I'll talk, we will talk about it and then I'll put that in the Friday update. Thank you.
I also want to just make a point around reviewing old action item and task items. So are these still appearing in the agenda so that people can see the information that we're provided? Because we, at the end of each board meeting, we go over things that the board has asked of the administration. And we, typically, we will get most of those answered as board members in our Friday packets, which is information that comes from the administration to the board. But part of this process was to also make sure that the public got those as well, so that they were going to be posted, if I remember, on the agenda, so that the public could go back. Could we make sure that's happening? That can be your first action item. Thank you. All right. Time to move on to the development part of the agenda. Public comment is up next. We have three individuals that have indicated they wish to speak to address the board this evening. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. I have first Ms. Kelly Yocum. Please make your way to the pub, to the podium. Hi, Ms. Yocum.
Hi.
Welcome.
I'm sure that can almost tie.
Oh, and if you do us, if you could pull the mic down so that that way the people who might be watching online can hear as well. And you have three minutes.
Hi. I'm, I don't really know what, I'm a teacher at King Elementary. And I have grandchildren who were on my insurance with me. My husband and I both work for the district. And whenever they did the audit in the fall of last year, they decided that it wasn't a dependent relationship according to Blue Cross and Blue Shield. And so they just dropped it, them off my insurance. And they're 24 and 22, but it's supposed to be till they're 26. And so what I found out is that I might be opposite, but that we have public insurance, so we don't have to follow the Affordable Care Act rules, is what I was told from Blue Cross and Blue Shield. And so I, I found what it says, and I found that I can do an appeal. So that's why I'm here, because I think our district's better than this. And it doesn't make any sense at all to me. So I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Yocum.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Ms. Margarita Friedman. Welcome, Ms. Friedman. And if you'll just make sure the microphone's there so everybody can hear you, that'd be great.
Can you hear?
Yes.
Perfect.
And we, three minutes.
First of all, I want to thank all of you for giving me this opportunity of being here. I'm Margarita Friedman, a resident of Pendleton Heights, a neighborhood in the Northeast. I'm also part of the Board of Directors in charge of community engagement and beautification. Community engagement, I have failed because I cannot get together the people of all colors. So we decided to start from the beginning, to try to engage with the children. They still don't notice the difference of colors. And there's where we found the need that you have the schools for mentors. And the real problem of our community, crime, that we cannot fix it. The community has focused, the neighborhood association and the residents, on stopping crime, preventing everything that you can imagine we have done to prevent, to stop crime, but nothing to prevent it. And it was not until recently that we realized that prevention starts in young age. We might not stop crime this year, but maybe in six years, maybe in 10 years. When all these children that do not have a mentor have one, and they are part of that community. And we are finally the village that can raise a child. For that, I need your support. We need the support of everybody. We need your support, first of all, in guiding us on how to do it, on how to engage, on how to do the best project that we achieve our goal of 50 mentors, 34 are filled, which that's where the kids that are on the waiting list, and the additional for the neighborhood school, SCARIT, that they have there, the high school and the middle school. The second one is to help us provide outdoor activities for them after school. We know the situation, who are their parents or who they are, or the situation at their home. It's heartbreaking of these kids. So they need to have outdoor activities. They need to have people who are willing to be their leaders, play with them football, soccer game, teach them art, teach them karate, Kung Fu, street dance. We have the teachers. We are the residents willing to do it. We are willing to pitch in for a teacher. But we just need the support of the parks, which seems to be our enemy, sorry, parks. But they, they can do it because they always think of millionaire things to put in, fancy playgrounds. And we only need wood sticks and bars for the kids to hang up there and do exercise like in the third country. But it works. It has worked. That's what we want. And it's with your support that you can help us have outdoor installations, basic, basic installations. We're not moving parts. Nothing can break. Nothing can be stolen and be sold in a junkyard for metals.
Thank you, Ms. Friedman.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, one more. We want you, we want you to invite you to our board meeting, Neighborhood Committee, board meeting, to talk about the mentoring program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Ben Randall. Welcome, Mr. Randall. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak to you. I appreciate you listening and hearing our words. I have two daughters in the district. One is at Lincoln and another one, I have a sixth grader that is now at Holliday. She went from Border Star to Holliday last year after some very catastrophic things happened with her, but also the implosion of the upper elementary at Border Star when teacher after teacher after teacher left. We moved her under the same principle. Holliday has been great. She went from going riding with me to school to riding the bus at Holliday, and that has been horrible. So I, we spent about two to three weeks of that settling out and everything being okay last year, and I ran out of patience for the next decade. This year, we have messed around and messed around. I got the little postcard that said 006. I put it up on my refrigerator. A bus didn't show up until 45 minutes late. And I said, are you 006? And he said, no, I'm 001. And we confirmed that, yes, she was on his list. And he took her to school. That was fine. She then came home on 006 because nobody else knew which route she was supposed to be in. The school put her on the wrong bus, and luckily she was on there because there were many kids on there that didn't know where their stop was. And as a sixth grader, she had to help find instructions to get to these stops. And it took an hour and 45 minutes for her to get home on a trip that should be 41 minutes, according to the paperwork I found online. Now, I requested to speak to this board yesterday. I got okayed. And then today, lo and behold, I get several calls from the Director of Operations and the Director of Transportation. They are lovely people. The staff here is great. I have no qualms. But the fact that this school, I mean, the, this district has a transportation department of two people, and the rest of the work is farmed out to corporations that are making money off this stuff and then treating bus drivers poorly and not having any continuity is really a travesty. So what I want this board to do is to think. Think about one thing. So I was, I'm lucky enough, my daughter's lucky enough, I took her to school. As I was going to school, I saw at least five or six kids waiting for a bus. Three or four of them had parents with cell phones in their hands, calling, looking very worried. And there was one boy leaning up against the stop sign with his backpack on his back, looking like, I'm done with this, two days in. That's the kid we need to be working for. And stuff like transportation should not be done by two people on staff here because the people that are actually doing the work have no reason to do it properly and well. And our customer service and the, and the kids are feeling the brunt of it.
Thank you, Mr. Randall.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we'll be moving on to the District Advisory Council report. And I believe the Chair will recognize the Chair of the District Advisory Council, Ms. Angie Lyle.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Thank you again for the opportunity to give this report on behalf of the District Advisory Committee for Kansas City Public Schools. My name is Angie Lyle, and I am a parent at Lincoln College Prep, and I serve as the District Advisory Executive Board Chair. Our board came together last week and welcomed Dr. Collier and Dr. Davis to fill us in on some of the details of this year's convocation and initiatives that will be our focus, along with some of the information about furthering the work of Blueprint 2030. We learned more about the status of our teacher shortage and staff shortages, too. And we look forward to meeting and connecting with our school parents and school liaisons in the coming weeks to make sure that every school is getting the resources they need to compensate for those shortages. We would also like to emphasize the importance of making sure that all of our teachers have the proper training they need to create the successful outcomes that are being expected now that we're accredited. I shared with Dr. Collier and Dr. Davis that Dion, who is my co-chair on the DAC, and myself are part of a literacy panel held by Senator Barbara Ann Washington. And one of the suggestions that we heard was that not all of our preschool and lower elementary teachers have received special training in literacy intervention, especially within our after-school programs, and instead are just reading to the child to raise interest in stories and reading overall, which is good. But this could be an area of focus for improvement, and our DAC would love to help. We've requested a look at possible data that we might have now that shows improvements overall for all of the after-school programs, for the kids who attend them versus those who don't, because we think it would be a valuable data point moving forward overall, just having that information. We discussed some of the conversations that were being had between Athletics Committee members and the notion that communication opportunities are being missed. Frequently, communications are siloed. They're coming out of different people. And the coach communities need to maybe work better together to solidify their communication strategies. And then it was also mentioned that coaches need to have more autonomy than they currently have, which affects the decision-making process on several levels. We received word from Dr. Davis, thank you for all of the information you gave us. He's expected to see every school this year to have at least two parents actively working to establish a parent group. So we're very excited to finally put into action what our group was created to do. We're ready to step up in any resources or support to any parent who wants to start a parent group at their school. Finally, we are also gravely concerned over the legislation being pushed at City Hall, which would limit public engagement when it comes to economic incentives, and also would limit the need for a third-party financial analysis when the requests for incentives are made. We disagree with the definition of affordable housing that the city has laid out and would encourage everyone who has a voice in this process to let our mayor and council know that, how we feel. We thank the board's legislative committee and look forward to working with them to stop the reversal of our hard work to preserve property taxes for our kids' education rather than for alleged affordable housing, which many of our parents cannot afford. We invite you and our public school community to join us for our first general meeting happening right here on September 21st at 6:00 PM. We're doing things a little differently this year. We're going to have all of our presentations and everything that we normally have in the first hour, but we're going to extend it for an hour after that to actually get in and do some, the work of delegate and, and the DAC. So we'll be talking about resources and things that the DAC parents can take back to their schools during that second part. So we'll be welcoming Dr. Collier to talk about her five rocks for 2022-23, and an update from the Athletics Department at our first meeting. And we'll have lots of resources for new parents, community members who want to get involved. And thank you again for this time. We're looking forward to an exceptional year.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lyle. It's going to be very busy in the DAC this year. Okay, next up, we have two guests from John Barjé and Associates. If you would come to the mic, I'd like to recognize you both. We have John Barjé and Chris Ropie. If you don't mind, I'll do a little intro. The government relations and the district, actually, the board and the district, work with John Barjé and Associates to represent us in Jefferson City on our state legislative affairs. You've been doing it for a very long time, very well, I might say. And we've asked them to come and give a little update about what occurred in the last session, what we think may happen, you know, little crystal ball in the next session, and then open it up for questions from the board. So I'd like to recognize Mr. John Barjé.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wolfsee. And good evening, everyone. I'm John Barjé, as Ms. Wolfsee indicated. And Chris Ropie, my coworker, is here with me. And we have the privilege and honor to represent Kansas City Public Schools in the Jefferson City and dealing with the legislative, the Missouri Legislature. We have done it for a while, and so we see some familiar faces and nice to see, and new faces we look forward to knowing and working with. We have had just a great deal of respect, everyone in our firm, for Dr. Bedell, Linda Quinley. They have really helped, along with all of you, in giving the Kansas City Public School System a seat at the table when discussions are occurring regarding K-12 system in our state. And so we appreciate everything that they've done. We look very much forward to working with Dr. Collier and others, and you, Ms. Wolfsee, and everybody involved as we navigate the waters that are becoming ever so tricky in Jefferson City when it comes to public education. The last legislative session, I'm going to just kind of give you a little overview. And Mr. Ropie was going to specifically talk about the legislation we worked on and what he sees coming up. Last session, as many of you are very aware of from reading the newspapers, did not turn out very well for anyone in the state of Missouri. It was a bit of an embarrassment, in my humble opinion, the way the Missouri Senate melted down. And when it did so, a lot of issues that probably deserved to be discussed and merits on both sides of those issues discussed, debated, it didn't happen because of personal attacks by several members of the Senate on others. And communication broke down in a very, very horrible way. What is of interest is that some of the people that were causing the chaos in the Missouri Senate happened to be some of those folks that strongly supported education reform. So while they were blocking a lot of other legislation, that was a topic that they wanted to talk about. And they spent many hours in rooms negotiating it. And of course, Mr. Ropie, myself, the other members at lobby on behalf of KCPS, and Dr. Bedell, Linda Quinley, and all of you had a voice in that. We were in that room, and Chris will talk a little bit more about that. As you all know, the Missouri Legislature is and will be, for the next period of time, heavily controlled by the majority, by the majority party is Republican. And there are some new leaders coming in Jefferson City. Speaker of the House, Dean Plocke, who's from St. Louis County, will be leading the House the next few years. And we'll have a new President of the Senate. While those inter-caucus elections don't occur until after the election in November by the bodies, it, the presumed person would be Senator Caleb Rowden from Columbia. We've been able to work with a lot of the interested parties, some that we disagree with, but some that we've been able to at least be in the room and make sure the KCPS voice and opinion are being heard by those that are trying to form and shape the legislation that impacts the KCPS and all the young scholars around our state and public education. So we've been pleased to do that. I think there will continue to be challenges that will arise. We do have, and Chris will talk about what may happen in a moment, but the next fiscal year for the state of Missouri does look very promising. I think there are those in Jefferson City that Chris will talk about that has some ideas on what they'd like to do with those funds in the next couple of weeks. As you all know, Governor Parson has called the legislature back into session, which will come in September 6th, in an effort to do a, a very large tax cut, which everybody likes until you don't have the funds to pay for services. And then, and then folks wonder about them. So we need to have a good balance there, and we're, we're very closely monitoring that, as Chris will talk about. The elections we have had, the elections that took place in August have taken out one incumbent senator that was a bit of a surprise from the Joplin area. And we may see a few more surprises, but I think that in, in general, most people that do what I do for a living are looking at the Missouri Legislature as probably, hopefully, being a more civil place to operate and where people might be able to agree to disagree in a civil manner. I'm certainly hopeful for that, for everybody in our state. Ms. Wolfsee, if I may, I'd like to ask Chris Ropie to come specifically, talk a little bit more about the legislation.
Yep, thank you.
You cut me off whenever, because there's a lot of stuff that we don't have time to cover, but happy to answer any questions and.
I just want to make sure my colleagues have a chance to ask you some tough questions.
Perfect. Happy to do so. So last session, you know, the biggest issue that was near and dear to, to the school district here was the charter funding debate that occurred that we, at Dr. Bedell's, in, in you all's, the board's direction to try to work something out on that and try to come up with a compromise. And hours and hours and hours were spent to do that. And we did get to an agreement with our charter counterparts in the Kansas City area. And I can tell you, the legislature is extremely appreciative of the board in that direction to try to work together, to come, come up with a solution that was good and what's best for kids. You didn't see that over on the other side of the state. They did not work together in, in the choice district that you, that you had over there. So that, I think, gives you a lot of credibility going forward and why we have been invited to sit at the table, as John said, and to be a part of those discussions as education policy is being formed for, for the state of, state of Missouri. Specifically on the charter funding bill itself, we had worked, coming up with language where you tried to figure out, because no school building, no, no charter school, no school district, every, every kid is not equal, every kid is not the same, and some kids are more challenging and cost more to educate. And so you tried to, tried to put that to a mathematical equation and look at what the costs that go into the types of students who might have special needs and some other, some other issues that lead to just harder, harder for that kid to learn. And we were able to do that, and we came to an agreement with the charter. So the money, as, as you hear a lot from the majority party in Jefferson City, you know, then the money would follow the kid, and that was a good thing. We, we got our agreement, and, and St. Louis and what they were trying to do, they, they did not come to any type of agreement. We wanted that to apply to Kansas City only so we could get the legislation passed to move, to move forward in the education space and what was being discussed in Jefferson City. And a little bit of a curveball happened last year, and thankfully, when you have a lot of extra money, you can solve a lot of problems from time to time. Completely went away from that idea that we had agreed to with our charter counterparts and, and just said, you know what, the state is just going to meet that shortfall of local funding that was not getting to the, the charter schools currently based on how the existing formula works and, and what is, is allowed and what you can do by law, which is, I mean, that allowed you all to keep that local money. It wasn't coming out of your, your pockets, trying to educate the kids that are in your system versus the charters, and, and the state made up that shortfall. And it really does tie the, the charter schools and public education across the state, if, if there's ever expansion of charter schools, to, to the funding, what the state will provide and how that looks. So it, it, it's a good thing that hopefully we can find more things to collaborate with the, the charter counterparts as that conversation goes forward. I can tell you, I know a big priority out of this for next session by a lot of legislators is, is when you look at, now we are funding charter schools with state, state money. It's not necessarily just local money where it's like local people and you're going to have oversight over that. The state is now going to want oversight because they are paying some of the bills. And there will be a big discussion about some of the differences in transparency, accountability, and a lot of those items will be discussed a lot in education next session. As a part of the charter funding bill that did, did pass, made to the governor's desk, and he signed it, it takes effect five days from now or four days, August 28th, whatever today is. Will take, take effect and be in, be in place going forward. There were three measures that were added to that bill, of which several were ones that we had, had asked for and asked to be included, that APR scores have to be on the school's website, that charter schools have to be non-for-profits, and that the charter board members must be citizens of the state of Missouri. So those are, those are three, you know, smaller pieces that we were able to get added to that, which is a step in the right direction in funding it in a way where the state is kind of on the hook for that is, is a good thing for everybody going forward. Another very important policy piece that was added to that bill was changed a little bit how virtual education works. And we were very lucky, I can't remember the, the person's name that I, I worked with at, at the district here that Linda put me in touch with, but we were able to articulate and get some changes made that made, that made them more comfortable, where we were able to say, we are not opposed to how you want to do that going forward. So that, that was all positive. The other, the other education bill that passed, I said, not a lot passed, and there was a lot of gridlock for a whole host of reasons, like John mentioned, was a, a major omnibus education bill that at the end of the day had about 25 different provisions added to it that were, for the most part, non-controversial. And again, we were asked by, obviously have a great relationship with Senator Razor and Senator Washington. They said, are we good with this? You okay with these things? And, and working with Dr. Bedell and Linda, we were comfortable and said, yes, you know, don't hold these up on our account. We are, we're okay with it. And there's actually some good stuff in there. So that's kind of the big stuff from, from last year. There was a lot of funding issues in the budget that, that were put in there that were very helpful. I'm happy to answer any questions about, and talk about that. I'm happy to answer any questions about, um, and talk about that. Looking forward to next year, we're gonna start with what's gonna happen on, um, November 6th, which is the Legislature will come back in a special session. Excuse me, yes, September 6th, thanks, John, um, after Labor Day, and what is being proposed is an extension of several agricultural-based tax credits, um, the meat tax credit, um, corn growers' tax credit, I mean, there's, there's six or seven of them, I believe, and as a part of that package that is being proposed by the governor will be a tax cut that the Missouri Budget Project, who is a very well-respected entity, budget watchdog group in Jefferson City, they are, they are putting that cost at about $658 million a year, going from 5.2% down to 4.8% for the highest income tax, um, uh, bracket in the state of Missouri, and also increasing the deduction for single filers by $2,000 and increasing for joint filers by $4,000, um, and you add that up as a total of over $950 million, close to a billion dollars, that the state will now be giving back in, in tax cuts every year that will take place, and we have money this year for it and probably have money for the next several years because of, uh, President Biden and some of the things he's done, but at some point, priorities will come up and, and education and, and, you know, transportation was fully funded this year, um, so who knows how long that will continue without those resources and a billion dollars being gone down, down the road. Um, the governor's people say it's only $700 million, so there's a disagreement, but it's a whole lot of money that could go to a lot of, um, a lot of, of, of good, good quality programs. So I don't know if that will end well, uh, there's a lot of, lot of controversy around it and, and what's going on in the Missouri Senate, based on what happened last session, there's carryover for that, so we will see how that will, will play out, but that issue's not going away, um, and it'll be right up again next session if they don't get it figured out during this special session. I think the issues to watch for next year that we'll be working on, the big House priority for next session will be open enrollment, which we are going to, um, be meeting with Representative Brad Pollitt, who is a former school superintendent from Sedalia, Missouri, who is pushing that bill, um, to, to advocate for some changes that we think would be beneficial for Kansas City School District, um, and, and I think that will be received well, and we'll have that conversation and, and see where that goes, but that will be, be a big issue out of the House. Um, another big issue Republicans will, will push that they didn't get accomplished last year that we know that will be back is banning CRT, um, a, a, what they're calling banning trans athletes, and then a parental bill of rights, um, legislation are, are three big priorities for the Republican Party in Jefferson City to get done, and that, that did not happen last year based on different deals and agreements that were made on other legislation that will be back and be debated very early in the legislative session. Um, MCP 6 is coming, um, I know we are, we're involved in, in a, at a Senate interim committee that is taking place on education issues, um, where that's being discussed, and what does that look like, and how do you, you know, measure performance increases and the types of things that should be taken into account to tell whether a school district is going in the right direction or not, but that'll be, that'll be a big issue that the Legislature will probably not be happy with what Desi is wanting to do, um, and will be involved in trying to put themselves in the middle of that. Um, I think the other, the other big, big piece is charter expansion will be back, and that doesn't affect you all as, as much, obviously, because you already have, have that here in Kansas City, but that is a huge priority for who will probably likely be the President pro tem of the Senate, and will, will be a, a large discussion there as, as one of his education priorities. Um, I think that kind of covers the big education stuff that's gonna be on the docket for next session. Happy to answer any, any questions or, or get into any more level of detail that you like on any of those issues or whatever your desire is.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bargee and Mr. Ropie. Um, I will open it up, I'm kinda keeping track of the time, um, to my board colleagues to ask any, this is your opportunity to, you know, I call it crystal ball, but ask anything that you want to know about what could possibly, you know, of, maybe of our priorities that, um, you might want to know about how they might land down in Jefferson City, so. I see Ms. Buckner.
Yes, thank you for that. Um, I just wanna be clear on the things that you said might be, come up. Um, you said open enrollment, critical race theory, banning trans athletes, and parental bill of rights?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you give me high-level overview of like, open enrollment and parental bill of rights?
Sure, so, uh, the way, and it's, education policy next to healthcare policy is probably the most complex, and, and these bills are, are really long and complicating people like Bill Thornton to interpret them for us, but the way open enrollment, um, the way I understand how it would work from the, the bill sponsor is the, the bill sponsor, it, that is his idea of how you solve the charter expansion issue and debate, and he said, we don't, we, we don't need charter expansion across the rest of the state if you pass open enrollment, because then you have choice for parents to go to another school district, you know, your traditional public school district, that, that is how that works. Um, the money would follow the child, similar to what we talked about in the, the charter funding, um, legislation. Um, he, he was willing to put in a protection last year for a school district to opt out if they do not want to, um, receive students, and obviously you have, you have school choice in this community, so, um, I think we'll, we'll make a case if directed to by, um, by you all that we already have school choice, we don't need a third, fourth option, what, you know, whatever the case may be, that just further dilutes resources and, and, and goes down that line of thinking. Um, I, I do know the legislation was written where you can't stop a child from, or a family from leaving the school district, but you can say, we are gonna opt out of receiving students from, from different school districts, that's, that's kind of how that works.
And then the parental-
Sure, and the parental bill of rights, and there's been a, a lot of variations, and that's an issue that the school administrators have been working on, State School Board Association, they're really in the middle of that, we kind of give them support on, on dealing with that issue, but it's just what, what information does a school district have to provide and to what level of detail to parents? And, you know, a lot of school districts already do this, you have, you know, boards and that are engaged with the community and, and have those conversations where that may not be a big deal, but because of COVID and some other things that are happening across the country, and, and I guess in some school districts in Missouri, that legislators were hearing a lot from their constituents saying, this is happening in my school, I don't know anything about it, this is what they're doing to my child, and so it, that, that is what they are attempting to, to fix, but with, with that issue. Yeah.
Mr. Abarkah?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Um, first, I guess, just on a open enrollment topic since we're there, I look forward to, if this goes forward, recruiting star quarterbacks to Lincoln High School and open enrollment, because I know that was, I think, Representative Pollitt's, uh, only concern is the sports impact, but, uh, nevertheless, um, I wanna ask about, uh, the kids advocacy component, because I think this was something that we worked on, and I, the trip that we all took, uh, including, uh, Ms. Lyle from DAC and several others, I think you all agreed were extremely beneficial, and I don't know if you watched or you all participated in when the kids did the presentation to us.
I did, I, I-
Yeah, so I, I think anything we can do in advance to help coordinate that from the committee side, I, I think, um, they, they are ready, they are brilliant, and, and I think I wanna be supportive in the best way I can, uh, to get that on the table rolling as session comes forward, so.
I, I would, you know, if you wanna say, it, it was a great experience, and not, I mean, regardless of talking about education issues, just the idea of going to your state Capitol, that, you know, you're engaging with your policymakers, that is, that's so important for, in life in general, but then who better to go deliver a positive message about the Kansas City School District than students and the great experience that they've had? I think the one young lady who was there, you know, like a perfect score on her SAT or ACE, whatever it is, and was going to Stanford, and, and Senator Washington was so excited to introduce her on the floor and, and such a, a cool experience, but it's, it's something that we've always talked about, when we do that, we wanna do it early in session, while legislators have time to take those meetings and aren't stuck out on the floor debating issues, you know, throughout the day and night, and that's, um, what I'd recommend doing again, and I think will, will happen, and we'll get that scheduled and, and do it again, cause it was, it was very successful. Hopefully get more, more students and parents, parents that came along, that, it was great, it was, it was just a good experience, and, um, that's, that is what a lot of, a lot of other education groups do a very good job of, that traditional public schools need to do a better job of, and, and it was a home run last year for sure.
I gotta give you tack kudos on your tact and your phrasing there, but it's, why you're doing what you're doing. Um, in regards to some of the things you mentioned, uh, about the tax cuts and, and the offsets now, right? How does federal legislation impact what you do at the state, and do you see value in us looking for that as an advocacy component? Because as I look at our COVID dollars, uh, you know, a hundred million dollars over four years from the federal government that ultimately got sent mostly to the state and then shuffled up, scrambled, and maybe sent back to us, what do you see that as, as potential for us to consider?
So, you know, it, we were a little nervous for a while last February with some of the ESR funds, because the Legislature had to appropriate it, um, you know, they were saying all the right things, but it could be hard to pass a bill that said the sky is blue on Tuesday mornings, you know, in Jefferson City, so you're always nervous till they actually do it, but they did get the money appropriated, so it could go out to districts to pay for a lot of the stuff that you had to take care of. Um, I don't, if the state wants to cut taxes and they wanna set their, you know, their tax rate at whatever level it's gonna be, I don't know there's anything the federal government can do to necessarily stop that, um, that, that I'm familiar with or, or aware of, um, you know, I, I think the, I, I just, I don't know a, a whole lot when you talk about local control, and that is from public education standpoint, that is a, a strong message that we are always delivering, that, you know, we have locally, like, school boards who know to make the right decisions, and when the Legislature doesn't like, what, then they don't like local control, and it's a situation where they disagree with what's happening locally, so that's a bit frustrating, probably hypocritical, um, and so I, that's what they will say if the federal government tried to come in and do something, and, and it's just, I, I don't know the silver bullet there to help, help that situation from, from the federal standpoint.
So, clarity, is there- Advocating from the federal side the same way we do with the state, seeing how that we've got all these federal dollars coming down.
I, I think so, absolutely, 100% would, would think that'd be a good thing to do, for sure.
Heard loud and clear, Mr. Abarkah. Um, Ms. Cortez, did you, I thought I saw you might, yep?
So one of the questions I have is we think about turnover in the Legislature and some of the things that we did last year and preceding years, is there an opportunity for KCPS to tell its story to the incoming legislators in advance of the session? Um, I, I think some of the opportunities we had where we brought legislators here, we invited legislators here, or whether we do it in-person or virtually, I'm an in-person fan, cause I think you create relationships that way.
Yep.
But are there, you know, should we be thinking about those kind of opportunities?
So, uh, an idea I, I have that, now that you mentioned that, every, new legislators go on what's called the freshman tour, that they travel the state and say, hey, here's where the prison and Chillicothe, and this is where the money you're going to appropriate is, and here's the mental health hospital in St. Joseph, and go around the state, um, you know, they will come through Kansas City, we would, A, we can make that request if we can get them to come, KCPS perhaps, uh, we will need help from, um, some legislators to help, cause they're the ones that make that decision on, on where they're gonna stop ultimately, so getting help from the local delegation to, to put that request in, and we can, we can coordinate that and have them, um, put that pressure on the Speaker and the rest of leadership that makes that decision, and see if we can get them, that's the easiest way, cause they're gonna be coming through and trying to do it that way, and there's always, you know, having meetings with your local delegation, when, you know, the approval of the, of the agenda for next year, to talk about that with them, needs to happen this, this fall, um, late summer, whatever, whatever it may be, to, to take care of that, and we've always invited, let, you know, Senator O'Laughlin came and did a visit, who's a, you know, from Shelbyina up in northeast Missouri, she came and she's, she, I mean, she loves you guys, I mean, we, it, it's the relationship, Dr. Bedell had a really good relationship with her, um, and I think she really listened to what he had to say, and, um, we can continue that in, in, in dealing, dealing with her, but it's, it's been successful to get people here and see in person, as much as that is, as we can help with and extend that invitation to the right people. Um, I, I know there's other state reps came, or they were supposed to come with her that day, I don't remember how many actually were able to make it, but we should, we should absolutely keep, keep doing that, and you're one of the largest school districts in the state, and you're doing great things over here.
Great. Um, we have one more question.
Yeah, this is specifically about the banning of CRTs, and she listed that.
Yep.
Um, and that continues to be a thing, do you imagine any new elements being added to the conversation this time or-
So, I mean, here, this is my take, when I talked to the other lobbyists who work in the public education space, there, there's no way to define what that even is, and so I think there is a way, and we'll share language when we see it, and you can look at what they kind of had last year, but I know the bigger education groups, like I said, the State School Board Association and the school administrators, um, I think they have some language they can live with that, I, I'll just be very blunt here, in the Legislature and what they want to do will feel like they've done something, but it won't, it won't hopefully have a negative impact on, on districts and how you need to do what you need to do to educate your students and to get your students to engage, um, and be active in the classroom, that's what you, you gotta do. And I know Dr. Bedell was not shy about standing up for that and talking about it, and, and it, you know, that's, I, I think, I think you can get to a place where there's no harm done, hopefully, and, and the issue gets taken off the table, perhaps. Does that make sense? Okay.
All right, well, we appreciate you coming all the way from Jefferson City to come see us in Kansas City, and yes, we will take you up on anything we can do to put us on the freshman tour. I think actually that makes such perfect sense, because they vote on something that affects us every year, it's debated, they, they do themselves a solid by coming and seeing us in person, so.
There will be almost 50 new House members-
Great.
Out of 163, because of, of term limits, so it, that, that would be hugely successful, I think, if we can-
Perfect, let's make that happen. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate you.
Senator Washington says hello, she had a little event that we stopped by to see her before we came here.
We love ourselves, all our senators.
Tell everybody hello.
Washington and Razor. Okay, uh, we're at the superintendent's report section, so I will turn it over to Dr., the chair recognizes Dr. Collier for this part of the agenda.
Good evening, Board Vice Chair Wolfsey, Board members, um, community, families, staff, and students that may be listening, we have, uh, six items that we're gonna cover this evening under the superintendent's report. Um, the very first, um, is very exciting, it's a recognition of our very own Teacher of the Year who advanced to Regional Teacher of the Year, and she is here with us this evening, um, I'm gonna ask Kayla McClellan if you will come forward. So just a few things that I wanna share with you about Kayla. Um, Kayla teaches Abbott in American History at Lincoln Middle School, um, she attended an HBCU, and she's representing them tonight, Grambling State University, and, yes, and that's where her professors inspired her to become a teacher, the kind of teacher that she actually needed. Um, Ms. McClellan helps her students build the study and organizational skills that they'll need to be successful in middle, high school, and beyond. Her principal, Mary Boccor, calls Ms. McClellan the ideal educator. Kayla describes herself as the ultimate hype woman for her students, and so we just wanted to acknowledge you, to celebrate you, um, to let you know how proud we are of you as our Teacher of the Year who has advanced to the Regional Teacher of the Year, and you can share some words if you like, and then we'll, um, come down and get a picture with you.
Oh, um, I don't have that many words, um, because I've been talking to kids all day, um, but I'm appreciative of this, um, opportunity. At the end of the day, I feel like, um, this year, first of all, just feels so much better from a teacher's perspective in the actual building, like, you can tell that there's being a transition in our district, at least in Lincoln Middle School, um, with the students, they're more positive, more upbeat, more excited to be there, teachers' mindsets are a little bit different, we reset this year in a way that is amazing, we saw faces from the BOE in our building, which makes us feel better about like, hey, like, do you see what we dealing with on a daily basis before we have to do more? Um, we love that, and then just getting to be here in this room and hear about legislation and things that actually do affect us that sometimes feel very over our heads, um, it's been good, and it's good to see people also, first of all, that look like me advocating for our kids and advocating for us as teachers, it feels amazing, especially a district that I went to school in, um, originally, so, thank you. No, no, listen.
So, I just want to share, Ms. McClellan was just telling us that she was, she's dressed in her college gear because at Lincoln Middle, they do College Wednesdays, where they are really highlighting and elevating college and its importance. And so, all the staff members wear their college paraphernalia. And we were just saying, we may just have to do that district-wide. I love it.
Low-hanging fruit.
Yes, it is. All right. This takes us to our next item, our video highlight, which, by the way, I just want to say, I believe is awesome, but I'm biased. It was produced by our very own Jonathan Solomon, who is in our Communications Department. And as you're watching the video, I want you to listen to the song. He actually produced and wrote that song. Then he hired someone to perform it, but it is amazing song that really highlights our theme for the year, Dare to Believe, We Can and We Will. And the video consists of Summer Fest, followed by Convocation, and then our first day of school.
Getting ready for the new school year at Kansas City Public Schools, started with Summer Fest. As we reach out to our community to make sure our students have everything they need for the first day of school.
Not really sure what happened. Are we able to start it back where in the middle, or we have to start all over? If so, we may just have to save it for another time, because we have a lot on the agenda this evening. I like that idea. We'll post it on our social media, on the website. Okay, let's keep going then. We also wanted to provide an opening of schools update. We did that at the last board meeting, but now we've started school, we just want to share a little bit about what we've seen so far these first three days. And I think the thing that we've seen commonly across the district, and we just heard it from our Teacher of the Year, is there is a genuine joy and excitement from our students, our families, and our staff. We just felt like everyone really came back ready to go this year, and I'm really ready to make a difference in the lives of our kids, and so that's, it's just very exciting. We had lots of back-to-school events that occurred, where there was a lot of positive energy and very good attendance. And I know the schools that I've visited already and spoken to, most of those schools talked about really great back-to-school nights and engagement with their families. And that's a really exciting thing for us. Also, the first days of school, our district-level leaders attended and visited our schools. We wanted to make sure that we had district-level leaders in every building, being there to support and to welcome our students and families. Each day, as we close the day, our leadership team debriefs on what we've seen for the day. We talk about the highlights, the things that worked well, but we also cover those areas where there's still room for improvement and growth. And a couple areas that we have cited, and we heard from a parent earlier today, one of those areas is transportation, and we are hearing those, some concerns come in. And so, we are addressing those as they come, and I think we have pinpointed exactly what our issue is, and so we'll be working to address that in the coming days. The other thing that we've noticed is around immunizations. Quite a few of our students have still have not gotten those, and so they can't start school until that has happened, but they're actively going getting those, and we're seeing more and more of our students arrive each day. We're looking at how we can help support them, get to the locations where they need to go, and so we're working on possibly providing cab service for families that may not have transportation, that need support getting to centers where they can get their students immunized. The next is our classroom coverage. We put a plan in place because we knew that we were starting the school year with some teacher vacancies, and fortunately for us, we had already staffed up quite a bit due to our experience last year dealing and navigating COVID-19. We had already provided every school with two building subs, and so that has been a major support for us. And so, prior to school starting, we had already determined which of our building subs would help us cover those vacancies, and they were given those assignments, and they're holding those positions as we are continuing to hire, and we have more hires coming in each day. The next is the environment in our schools. We know it's really important that there's a warm and welcoming environment, and that was something that was covered with our school leaders prior to the start of school. And so, we're seeing really warm environments, clean buildings. Our custodial team has done a great job of preparing our buildings in ways that maybe we hadn't even seen in the past. The buildings look great, and so we are very excited about the work that our operations, custodial maintenance teams have done to prepare our schools. And then we also made sure that our social-emotional support staff are in our buildings, in place, ready to go, preparing with our staff even before the start of school. And if you're looking, if you're out on social media, you're seeing a lot of the community circles that are happening at the start of the day. I see Chirvana's excited about that. They're doing those in the morning, helping to build positive relationships and sense of community and connection in the classrooms, which is going to be very important and foundational to our students' success. And then, community partners, that's been a huge piece. We have had so many community partners come out to help support us in these first days, to welcome our students and our families, and we talk about that village, and our village has truly wrapped their arms around KCPS and been a support for us, and we are so grateful for all of our partners who have been involved with us. I want to make sure I'm not leaving anything off. And then, just positive feedback that we've received from students, from family, staff, and community members. We are really grateful for the positive feedback, but also, I just want to say, those areas where we know we need to grow, we are taking those seriously. We're actively working with a sense of urgency, and we are going to make sure that we continue to improve the experience, not only for our students, but for our families and community as well. So, that is all I have for the opening of schools update, unless there are any questions.
Any questions? I'm looking up and down, looks like you are good.
And before we move away from this, we have made a commitment this year around really being more culturally responsive and equitable in our practices, and one of the things that we have, we've done is try to ensure that we are providing translation for our families who, English may not be their first language. And so, this evening, I've asked our new Chief Communications and Marketing Officer if she would just share this, a brief summary of this report in Spanish for our Spanish-speaking listeners.
Gracias por la oportunidad de presentar esta informe para nuestras familias de habla hispana. Revolte sobre la apertura de las escuelas. Alegría y emoción en los estudiantes, familias, y personal. Alegría y entusiasmo por KCPS en el primer día de clases. Hubieron numerosas publicaciones en las redes sociales de parte de nuestras familias y miembros del personal, y fue muy bueno poder ver el entusiasmo. Muchas escuelas tuvieron eventos, reuniones, motivaciones, DJs, regalos escolares, y regalos de mochila. No. De mochilas para dar las bienvenidas a nuestros estudiantes y las familias a las escuelas. Cubierta suficiente en la aula para todos los estudiantes. Recursos humanos nos informó en nuestra reunión de seguimiento sobre la apertura de las escuelas que todas las salones de las clases estuvieron cubiertos con los maestros. Gran presentación visual, edificios limpios y hermosos jardines. Se recibieron informes sobre los limpios y brillantes que están nuestros edificios. El equipo de limpieza y instalación de trabajo de antemano durante el fin de semana para asegurarse que todo estuviera listo para el primer día para nuestros estudiantes. Se implementaron apoyos sociales emocionales. Me ayuden aquí, ayúdame, si se digo algo mal, para los estudiantes. Nuestros clínicos, consejeros, y coordinadores de justicia estuvieron listos para recibir a nuestros estudiantes en todo el distrito. Socios comunitarios, organizaciones caritativas, I said that wrong, de los royales, KC Chiefs, City Year, y Link. Ayudaron en la entrada de estudiantes temprano por la mañana. Nos gustaría agradecer a nuestros socios comunitarios que nos ayudaron a celebrar la apertura de las escuelas, y también brindaron asistencia para que nuestros estudiantes salieran de los autobuses y entraran a las escuelas. Comentario positivo de los estudiantes, las familias, el personal, y los miembros de la comunidad. Recibí, Dr. Collier recibió, números llamadas, correos electrónicos, y mensajes de texto sobre lo bien que fue el primer día de escuela. Muchos expresaron que este fue el mejor comienzo para la apertura de las escuelas en muchos años. Si bien sabemos que las cosas no fueron 100% perfecto, eso se sabe. El personal trabajó para resolver rápidamente las preguntas y inquietudes de nuestros padres, de nuestros padres, y de la escuela. Gracias por la oportunidad.
Thank you. And for those who may not have met, our new Chief Communications Marketing Officer, her name is Hope Soriano McCray, and we are glad, McCray, and we are glad to have her with us. Thank you for that.
Well, that was convenient that I come after this, but for those who caught backpack in school a couple times, that's what it's like for a Spanish-speaking speaker to approach our system, and that they have no idea what's going on. So, that was incredibly impactful, and we appreciate from the community that speaks Spanish, that interlude there. My question is around the transportation component, because it sounds like there's still some kinks to be worked out of our system. What's the follow-up that parents like the one here and several others have or will expect to help kind of settle some of those things?
Well, as I stated, we've sort of pinpointed some of areas of concern, and one of those, our speaker actually noted, was our staffing levels in our transportation department. Many of the issues that we're seeing are related to that. I don't know, I don't want to go back way into the history, but if you remember, when we were with the prior bus company, we worked with a third-party called Transpar, who did all of our routing, they did the customer service, they did all of those pieces, and it was about seven folks, I think, were a part of that. When we transferred over to STA, we did not continue the contract with Transpar, and we put all of that on the two people that are in that department, which is why we've had the issues that we've had. We spoke with our Director of Transportation, who shared a lot of that with us today, the concerns, because we were trying to figure out what is happening, and that was what came out of that. So, we have already started working to secure staff for that area. We have some immediate staffing that we're going to assign for tomorrow temporarily until we get permanent staff to fill those positions. Yes? It's, all right, so I think we're at the next phase, next presentation, which is our Charter Sponsorship Report, and that will be provided by Ms. Charnessa Holiday Scott, who is our interim Chief of Staff.
Good evening. Board Superintendent Collier, I will be sharing our Fall Charter School Sponsorship Update. And as you know, for our charter school sponsorship, Kansas City has, Kansas City Public Schools has taken the position of charter school sponsorship. While 90% of school districts in the United States, charter school sponsors are, excuse me, charter school sponsors are 90% school districts all across the country except for Missouri. So, it may seem like here in Missouri, we are the anomaly, because we are the only school district that actually sponsors school. But when we look at our board policy, and our board policy, 0.0 starts from our commitment as a school district is to all children in the system. So, that's where we start from. And then we look at our strategic plan, goals, and measures, and that is Key Action 11.4. And that focuses on exploring coordination, collaboration, and partnership opportunities with charter schools and charter sponsors in this system, because the goal is to effectively and equitably serve all students. And so, that's where we view our charter school partnership from. That's the lens. So, as a charter school sponsor, we are responsible by law to evaluate performance, monitor compliance, inform intervention and renewal decisions, and ensure autonomy under the law. We do this, and we fulfill the law through providing key areas of accountability. We oversee charter school governance, finance, academics, and compliance with the law. We do this also through our evaluation procedures. So, we sponsor three charter schools, and we do site visits, document review, data review. We also attend their board meetings, as well as we interview staff and, if possible, students or families. So, this is how we fulfill our responsibilities. Our history with charter school sponsorship, for those who may not know, our history actually started in the 90s with Westport Edison School. And as I've shared with this board, that all of the schools in the Kansas City area and actually in the state of Missouri that started as partners of Westport, of Edison, have now closed. They've either closed, or they've moved away from being an Edison School. That was a management company, and so Kansas City also separated from Edison. We also looked to DESI to then reapply as a sponsor in 2015, and that was so that we can open up the Kansas City Neighborhood Academy. And so, we opened Kansas City Neighborhood Academy. It has subsequently closed. That was a choice of the board of KCNA, not the choice of this board. So, there was not anything regarding the relationship. It was a choice of their board after they looked at their enrollment over a period of time, and they just had a hard time because there are so many schools, charter schools in the system, that it was challenging for them to continue to meet their enrollment goals and thus meet their financial goals. DESI also evaluated Kansas City Public Schools in 2018. So, we were evaluated in 2015 to be a charter school sponsor, and again in 2018. In that following year, we also obtained Allen Village School in 2019 from the UMKC. They were renewed as a charter school for five years in their expedited renewal, which was a five-year agreement. So, the current status of our charter school sponsorship. Just to let you know, last week, we passed our charter school sponsorship evaluation for the last year, approximately the last year, you may not have known, but I had been working on our evaluation as a charter school sponsor. That required a number of documents being submitted to DESI that required questions That required questions. They asked me questions. They reviewed more documents, asked more questions, asked for more documents to be sent. I think I've sent hundreds of documents to send to them to see how we do what we do. So Desi evaluated us in these six areas that you see on your screen. One is sponsor commitment and capacity. So do we have the capacity to be a charter school sponsor? So they wanted to look at that. How do we do what we do? Because I'm technically in office of one. However, being a school district, we have vast resources because we have departments that also provide support. So whereas some charter school sponsorship offices have to hire a lot of people, we have a school district in the background to provide the expertise or the consultation to meet our capacity needs. Also for section two, they looked at our application process and decision making. How do we make decisions around accepting a school that we want to sponsor? How do we do that process? They also viewed our charter contract. Is our contract with other charter schools compliant with the law? And does it explain clearly how we do what we do and how we are expecting to hold the charter school that we contract with responsible for fulfilling their responsibilities? And then section four focused on ongoing oversight and evaluation. What do we do when we provide oversight? How do we evaluate the schools? How do they know that they are being evaluated? So they viewed our process in that. And then as well as fiscal oversight and then section six, renewal, replication, expansion, revocation or closure decision making. So how do we make decisions around those areas? So of course, during that period of time, they looked at the process that we engaged in when it when we closed KCNA. And then they also looked at the process we engaged in when I recommended the renewal of Allen Village School. So just to let you know, we passed. So our next evaluation will be in three years. For charter school sponsors are evaluated every three years by the state. Just to let remind you that we do sponsor three charter schools. Allen Village School is a pre K through 12. We've had them since May 2019. They are a school. Their focus is technology. So they are a technology school and have been that since their inception. They are one of the few schools when the pandemic hit, they were already a one to one school prior to the pandemic and had been so for a number of years. That was one of the reasons for them to be so nimble when the pandemic hit because their students had already been engaging in regular online learning. They are located in the Westport area. The second school we sponsor is Crossroads Charter School. We they too are a pre K through 12. We have been sponsoring them since late January 2022. And just to share with you, just this last spring, I took them through their renewal. They had a high quality expedited renewal, which allowed them to be renewed for 10 years. And this is due to their high academic performance on their APR scores and their MAP scores. And then then the last charter school that we sponsor is Gordon Parks Academy. And with Gordon Parks, they are an elementary school, pre K through four. We have had them since February 2022. They are the smallest, one of the smaller charter schools in the area. Currently, they have approximately 129 students for this school year. They are a view themselves as a community school. And so they really focus on climate and culture for them. They are a charter school that is up for renewal. That will be taken up for renewal this spring to the State Department. So this board will see me again. Once we do our evaluation of the school, which is what we are starting now, is to look at their processes, their policies, how they have performed over the years, the last five years. I will be before you with a recommendation regarding their renewal. And then once making that recommendation for this board, then we will make the recommendation for the state board regarding their future. For future planning of charter school sponsorship, we are continuing to maintain our relationship through the Collaboration Council as well as ongoing partnerships, not just with the charter schools we sponsor, but those charter schools that are within the area. We're also continuing to look to move our Office of Education Collaboration to the next level by also evaluating the office and seeing how technology can assist us. Because in being an office of one, but also gaining more schools, how do we effectively and efficiently be able to continue monitoring those charter schools? And so I did share, for some reason, this clicker is not working well. But we will continue to share our successes. And as I shared with you what our successes are, but ultimately, the biggest success for us right now is that we are a qualified eligible charter school sponsor, which is a big deal in this in this system. And we continue to be. Also, the feedback from the State Department members last week, I don't know if any of you were listening, but many of them were excited by the fact that Kansas City Public School is a charter school sponsor and is also leading the way in discussing how to change the system and how to do it in a more collaborative manner. That same hour performance at the charter school sponsorship during that board meeting also bled over to our appearance in the Senate Education, interim Senate Education Committee. Apparently, some of the board members from the state board contacted some of the senators. And so they were excited to hear from us as well. So but we still have some barriers. And the main barrier that we still have a challenge with is the fact that there are some in the system who just feel like a school district shouldn't be a sponsor. And and that's something we're just going to face. That's the main challenge that we do face because we do know education is a sensitive issue. And even more so as we go through the legislative session of last year and into the one of this year. And so at this time, I am going to see, are there any questions?
Ms. Ford?
My first question is about the barrier that you just mentioned, given that that's a very, you know, real situation. What kind of insights can you provide to just community or any folks that might have trepidation as to like the benefits even to KCPS, to charter schools or even our system broadly? What are the benefits to us being sponsors?
Absolutely. The benefit to Kansas City Public Schools for being a sponsor is one, ultimately, we are responsible for all children in the system. As being the home school district, if a charter school closes tomorrow, we are the one entity that has to be prepared to accept all children. And so one of the benefits of being able to collaborate and to see what's going on with the system by sponsorship, we know what's going on. We are able to see what kind of education is being done and also by a sponsor. When we say that we're holding ourselves accountable, it gives us an opportunity to hold the schools accountable, to make sure that students are getting a quality education as well. So that's a twofold benefit for us. The benefit for the charter school is the fact that there are times where they do not have the critical mass of resources or even being able to consult with someone who may have an expertise. So for example, a smaller charter school like Gordon Parks, they may only have one person on their team that actually works with ELL students, whereas we have an entire department. And so for some of them, they have questions around maybe compliance issues. How do they do that well? Or it may be an area that they're not familiar with. And so here we are with a critical mass and we also have an expertise on site. So that becomes a benefit for them. But the benefit for our community is the fact that this system can be a little hard to navigate for families. When you're looking at a system that has a traditional school district along with 20 charter schools that start and stop at different places, you know, with it may start at kindergarten, it may start at fifth grade, it may start at ninth grade, it may end anywhere in between. We are able to say, hey, we're willing to take the lead to find the efficiency in the system. Because ultimately, we have to have the hard conversations about what is going on in this entire Kansas City Public Education system.
And just one quick follow up. Can you share how are the sponsorship years or yeah, the terms determined? So some have five, some had 10 in terms of renewal? Is there some magic to that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
As a sponsor, we are, we have evaluation every three years. For a charter school by law, they either have a five year renewal or a 10 year renewal. It is based on their performance. And basically, a charter school that earns a 10 year renewal, they have scored above 85 on their APR report of four of the last five years. So it has to be, it's based on achievement. And then also it is make sure that they are fiscally sound, that they also have a plan for maintaining fiscally, maintaining operationally. But more than anything, it is about achievement and high achievement. So that is where one will earn a 10 year renewal. There are approximately, I think, seven, not seven charter schools in the state, I think, that have earned the 10 year renewal.
Did I see any questions on the right side? No. I don't know that we I'm sorry, we do not take questions from the audience, but you can submit them to what's the email address?
Submit them to board@kcpublixschools.org. Thank you so much.
Mr. Abaka, did you want to ask a question?
First off, kudos to all your hard work on this. I know that you have certainly designated a lot of your career in this capacity focused on the collaborative efforts between the entities. I want to say that I wholeheartedly support everything you're doing here and welcome more charter schools to come on board and and get involved with us. Having been on a charter school before, I completely agree with the capacity issues, right? Right? I mean, whether it's shared field space or the teacher support or just guidance as to how to operate a school. And then you start talking about facilities and on and on and on. The opportunities of working with us versus viewing us as a competitor in some of these environments is such a critical thing for the benefit of kids, right? And I think as we look at the policy side of things, it's often putting us against each other with that benefit of the kids not as the focus. So to go to my question is, where are some of the other opportunities at in terms of the partnerships, right? We talked about food service at one point in time and several other of these layers of collaborative efforts. Are there pinch points? Are there more opportunities that the board can support? Where are we at in some of that stuff?
There are always opportunities around operations. To be honest, having an operations conversation is probably one of the easier conversations to have with a charter school is about whether it in Kansas City always comes to the table with, does it benefit both of us? It cannot be a one sided relationship. And that is what I share with the charter schools, you know, to partner with Kansas City, it cannot be 100% benefit charter schools and no percent benefit Kansas City Public Schools. Because we both have to be able to be invested in what the partnership or the discussion is. So whether that is around operations such as, like you said, transportation, operations around custodial, facility services. But then there's also the discussion that actually was approached to me yesterday. And it occurred a few years ago was the fact of a group of teachers, some from charter schools, some from Kansas City Public Schools. They came together as a cohort and they actually visited each other's schools to be able to learn from one another, to see what works well for Kansas City that charter schools can learn from, work works well for charter schools that Kansas City can learn from. And from what I understand, the person said it happened somewhere, somewhere around 2016, 15, 16. And they thought it was such a benefit from both sets that it doesn't didn't interrupt anyone's autonomy, but it allowed us to see what are some of the things that we can pick up from them and what are the things that they can learn from us? So there's always discussion. One of the discussions around the Collaboration Council is a discussion around a semi, what I call a semi common calendar, not a common calendar, because like I said, everyone wants to maintain maintain their autonomy. But the fact is, we have families who have children in both systems. And when you have drastically different calendars, such as Christmas break, such as spring break, when they're so different, you have families that are trying to, whether it's being able to have childcare services, whether it's being able to be at both locations at the same time or make arrangements. So those high level areas where we think we can come together on a common ground, we want to do that. And so those are chances that I think are for collaboration, potential future collaboration.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes. I will say that this is probably the most comprehensive I've heard us speak about this collaboration or sponsorship with charter schools. So I really appreciate this information today. And I know those who are here and who are listening, they have questions to speak to your barrier, really appreciate. So thank you for this. I think where I have struggled previously and where I'm still kind of struggling now is that we are taking on what I've heard you name and others name, high performing charter schools, right? And I struggle with that language of high performing, right? Because I'm looking at data that does not suggest high performing. Okay? Especially for Black and Brown students. And so I look at also look at our data and we have points that need we need, we have, we need attention to a lot of what we're doing here. And so when we talk about accountability, my first question is where is our bar to hold another system accountable? Right? So that's my only concern here when we talk about high performing, like I need to know what that means. So I would really like to see the rubric. And also really dig into like what our end goal is here. Like I hear, I see the board policy. I see like, you know, all kids and that sounds great. But I need to know like what this looks like in real time when it comes down to our systems. So that's just where I'm struggling with this.
Absolutely. And we can definitely, I can share more about the rubrics. Part of the charter school law is defined with the APR score. So that determines and when I say high quality renewal, that is actually a legal term that's actually in the statute that defines how they get renewed. So so with that, that is based on the APR score, annual performance report. And where do they fall? Mainly, the base for all charter schools is supposed to be that they they are supposed to perform better than the local school district with a minimum of 70 as an APR score. Let me, and I will tell you, when you look at across our system, you will see not all charter schools are performing there. But that is a decision each individual sponsor has to make. And then they take that up with the state board. So for us, we look at legally, where do they fall? We have, we have a handbook, we have an expectation of what happens if you fall below that APR score. We actually have interventions in place and then there's always the possibility of closure. And I will repeat what our state board president said. He said, the intent of charter schools was that He said, "The intent of charter schools was that, that they were to be easily to open, but easily to close if they were not performing according to the state statute." Now, living it is something different, but for Kansas City Public Schools, it is very clear that they know what the expectations are. But what we also look at is not just the APR score. So for example, I'm having a conversation with one, with all of them about how do they continue to improve performance? Because what I saw across the board, which I think we saw across the state, was since the pandemic, scores have dropped. So how do we discuss and how do we improve those, those scores? And what do you have in place with your school that you are working to improve those scores? So even though you may have the high APR, if you've dropped, how do you make that improvement? And so I, I understand where your concern is coming from. I, I completely understand it, and we can definitely get you additional information.
Okay, I'm not seeing any more questions. I would say that I think there is an opportunity, Dr. Collier, for us to spend just, you know, maybe it's a workshop, maybe it's an offshoot, but to go a little bit deeper here, because I think it's difficult in this environment. I could ask you so many more. I could actually expound a little bit more on this myself, we've had a long conversation about this, but this is nor the time nor the place, but we've got a lot of work, I think, for us to understand, even around things such as the measurement that you speak about and understanding what it is we're really measuring, and, you know, there's, there's a lot there. So thank you for the presentation. I think we have an opportunity to do a deeper dive on that, perhaps.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Holliday Scott. At this time, we will move on to our next presentation, which is the unearthing or the disclosing of the five big rocks. We've been hearing about the five big rocks. What do those actually consist of? So at this time, Dr. Davis will lead off that presentation.
All right. Thank you Superintendent Collier, and good evening, Vice Chair Wolfsee, members of the board and audience. Kansas City Public Schools has launched a number of high-priority initiatives in recent years, and with dozens of initiatives in operation simultaneously, we felt it was important to come before you this evening and share which of those initiatives fall within our top five priority areas of what we're calling our five big rocks. And they are as follows: literacy, math, culturally responsive teaching and practices, social-emotional wellness, and parent and family engagement. These five big rocks are our highest priority because they are so foundational to the success of the other initiatives, and when braided together, help to ensure that we're graduating students who are prepared to succeed in college careers and life. Tonight, our presentation will cover these four relevant policies. And with me this evening, we have five KCPS team members. Each of them will go in further detail with each of the five rocks. So first up, I'm going to call to the microphone Ms. Erin Dorsey, who serves as our Director of Elementary Education.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Davis. I'm really excited to get the opportunity to share with you some of the very innovative things that we have put in place this year to support the KCPS Literacy Plan and our focus around literacy. So I'm going to summarize them here, then we'll go into depth in the subsequent slides. First off, we know that literacy is the key to opening doors to our students' dreams and their unlimited potential. To support that, we have reading interventionists in every building to support our students. To engage our students in reading, we are launching our KCPS Loves to Read Reading Campaign. To support our teachers in these initiatives, we will start the very first KCPS reading endorsement cohorts that will provide our teachers with high-quality professional learning, focus on the science of reading, foundational skills, as well as instructional practices. We also have district-wide reading strategies implemented across all content areas, K-12, and we have culturally responsive libraries in all K-six classrooms, including pre-K, actually. All right, so let's dig into, ooh, went too fast. Sorry about that. Let's dig into our reading campaign. KCPS Loves to Read. We love to read. Dr. Collier loves to read. Everyone in this room loves to read, yes. The goal of this reading campaign is really to motivate students to read, but to develop and foster that love of reading that we know is so important, but also really difficult at times. So we want to connect what the students are reading to themselves, as well as ways they can contribute in their community. By participating in the reading campaign, students are committing to read at least fifteen minutes every day. KCPS Loves to Read is going to kick off on September seventh. Mark your calendars. We're going to kick off with a district-wide stop-and-read, and that is literally what we're going to do. We're going to stop what we're doing at ten o'clock, grab a book, and read. We're going to read for fifteen minutes. We will continue to do this each month on the first Wednesday to keep motivating students to read, but also to bring the community together. We ask that you all join us, and when you do, we would love it if you could post a picture to your social media or Twitter with the hashtag KCPSreads. In addition, there will be monthly family newsletters sent home with information on how parents and caregivers can support their students, both with social-emotional learning and traits, but also with reading and comprehension, very easy things that can be done with no resources at all, just discussion and reading time at home. We will also have monthly Read Alouds, which are really exciting because there's going to be some very famous guests, both large and even small, that will be reading aloud via our social media outlets throughout the year. School librarians and counselors will collaborate with us to provide lessons both on social-emotional learning, as well as interactive Read Alouds that connect that learning to literacy. And for your reference in your binder, there is a list of the monthly focuses, as well as some book lists. To support our teachers and address the instructional needs of our students, we really want an opportunity to provide them with high-quality professional learning, and that takes time, both in and out of school at times. So we're starting the first KCPS reading endorsement. This endorsement will provide training in letters, which is Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling for pre-K through three teachers, as well as three Ls, which is Learning, Language, and Literacy Training for our fourth through twelfth grade teachers. The Department of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development collaborated with the Department of Language Services and Cultural Equity to provide monthly support to the teachers in those reading endorsements, to make sure that, that learning is being implemented in that classroom and they're receiving the coaching supports, and of course, the monitoring of that as well. All right, be careful with this clicker, it's sticky. Okay. In alignment with the district-wide literacy focus, we have implemented reading strategies across all content areas. Those are academic language and vocabulary, which is simply the language specific to the content area and those keywords that support understanding. And then close reading strategies, which is just allowing students to examine a piece of text and extract meaning from it, giving them multiple at-bats with that text as well. And finally, to support all of this work, we must provide support to teachers, other building staff, as well as our administrators. So we have monthly PLCs for reading interventionists, as well as instructional coaches, where we will do district-wide data dives and discuss best practices and collaborate with curriculum coordinators on how to best implement those. There are after-school professional development opportunities for all interested teachers, aligned with our literacy plan and our ELA curriculum. And then finally, building administrator training for letters and three Ls. They are the instructional leaders in the building, so they must be well-versed on how to best support their teachers that are participating in the reading endorsement. So with that, brings me to the next big rock, which is math, and I'd like to introduce Ms. Latonya Franklin, Assistant Superintendent Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsey, and good evening. So in alignment with our literacy focus, we also want to foster the same love and excitement for math. Okay, okay. Right, okay, wow, we got some work to do. Or at least a strong like, we'll settle for that. But what we know is that basic math knowledge is a necessary life skill. An advanced math knowledge is a requirement for post-secondary education in specific career fields. The targeted strategies for the Math Big Rock are designed to engage, challenge, and build math competency and confidence. All right. Our focus math work will include professional learning opportunities for math endorsements, instructional strategies to integrate literacy into math using math stories, math vocabulary, and opportunities for writing, and monthly professional development opportunities to enhance overall instructional knowledge and practice. Just a couple of highlights from the math endorsement work. Our numbers training, that's designed to be interactive and hands-on. We also have the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics Book Study, using the text Access and Equity Promoting High-Quality Mathematics. Our math professional development highlights include: monthly PLCs for our math interventionists and instructional coaches who play a critical role in supporting instruction and professional learning; after-school professional development to enhance instructional practices; and professional learning opportunities for our building administrators. And as Ms. Dorsey mentioned, they are the instructional leaders of our schools and responsible for monitoring instruction and supporting teacher growth and development. And lastly, just a few of the key performance indicators for literacy and math. Increasing student achievement as measured by our district interim assessments and eye-ready diagnostic; classroom observation data to identify those instructional shifts designed to enhance student learning; and observation of student work and interactions to assess their knowledge and understanding of the targeted strategies. So next up, you will hear from Ms. Becky Nace, who is our Director of Professional Learning.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Good evening, Dr. Collier and Board. So I would like to begin talking about culturally responsive practices with a focus on professional learning. Oh my goodness. This thing is, oh, are you, can you do it?
I can.
Okay. Because this, thank you, Dr. Davis. So in place, we have already our Focus Thursdays and Fridays, which is an opportunity for our executive team, our directors, and our school leadership to continue conversations around equity, inclusion, and culturally responsive practices. I'm going to skip down on my slide just to talk next about our Leadership Institute 2022. So this was an opportunity this summer for us to bring in our building admins and their leadership teams for two days of intensive training around culturally responsive practices and the tenants of those practices, really taking a deep dive into what this looks like and sounds like in our buildings and in our classroom. And the Leadership Academy was able to facilitate those sessions. We also had our Professional Learning Institute, and we had, we kicked that off with Dr. Collier and Dr. Davis welcoming our teachers back to the new school year and really setting the stage and framing the work around culturally responsive practices for this, this upcoming school year. We also then followed that by a keynote address, a very powerful and passionate speaker, Dr. David Kirkland, and then we were able to follow that up with two days of multiple sessions around culturally responsive practices, and our teachers were able to attend those sessions, and we did get a lot of really positive feedback from the teachers that attended those sessions. So as Ms. Dorsey was talking about earlier, about KCPS Loves to Read, so we're taking a little bit of a different take on this with all KCPS employees love to read, and they're going to love reading the Culturally Responsive Teaching in the Brain book by Zaretta Hammond, that's our book study book. We have a plan in place for the book study for our campus staff, our central office staff, our classified staff, and then also our family and community. We're going to kick off our campus plan with eight sessions throughout the year. We'll start on September 28th, and we're chunking chapters one and two together, which really allow us to kind of set that foundational work for our campus staff. And then each month during our Wednesday professional development, we'll be studying a different chapter all through the year. These sessions will be facilitated by our building admins and leadership teams, and the slide deck will be, the slide deck support will be designed and supported through my office, which is the Office of Professional Learning. Next up, we have our central office staff, a plan for them. So we have three sessions, as you can see, we've chunked the chapters together for those three sessions. And we know that this, while this work is very important, we know that there's also important work going on at central office every day. So we've split into two sessions for our employees to choose from, an AM or a PM session. And then you'll notice that we have different facilitators for each of those sessions from a variety of departments across the district. We also have a plan for our classified staff, and I've been working really very closely with Brenda Cyrus, who is our Director of Classified Staff. And Brenda and I have been really looking at how culturally responsive practices impact the work of our classified personnel, because we do know that in KCPS, all of our employees are teachers within their sphere of influence. Brenda, in turn, is working with department directors to think about what that looks like and sounds like in each of these different departments, and wanted me to make sure that I said that culturally responsive practices will also be embedded in all of their department meetings and their work moving forward. And then last, but not least, is our family and community plan. So Dr. Collier has been really generating quite a buzz about this out in the community. I've seen a couple of the board members tweeting out about this, and so we do appreciate really monitoring, or really, you know, making a, a deal out of this. So we're really looking at how do we authentically engage and partner with our community and our families to make sure that this topic is really a very, very engaging for them. So we've reached out to some experts in this field about possible, possibly facilitating some of these sessions, and then we're also asking KCPS board members and community members to engage in these sessions with us, and this is an ask, so if you are interested, please let Dr. Collier know. And then finally, we're looking at our key performance indicators around our culturally responsive book study. And certainly, we would expect to see an increase in student performance in all content areas, and this would come as a direct correlation with increased student voice in our classrooms, culturally responsive practices being reflected in our instruction and in our curriculum, and then also a classroom environment that is affirming the cultural backgrounds of the students and the families that we serve. We're also looking at increased family and community partnerships. Courtney Adams is going to come up and speak to that a little bit more in-depth here in just a few minutes, but certainly, as we increase those partnerships, we really want to make sure that we're doing that through the lens of culturally responsive practices. And then also enhancing community knowledge around culturally responsive practices. As an instructional institution, we need to be working together as a team to move cultural responsiveness forward, not just in KCPS, but in KCMO and beyond. responsiveness forward, not just in KCPS, but in KCMO and beyond. With that, I would like to bring up Travana Alexander-Toney, our Director of Behavioral Health.
Thank you, Ms. Nace. Good evening. So... Are you going... You going to help me out? Okay, perfect. So why trauma-informed schools, guys? Because we know, at KCPS, we're striving to create and maintain trauma-sensitive and trauma-informed learning environments where our students feel safe, mentally, behaviorally, physically safe, where they feel connected and have a sense of belonging, and where they can demonstrate self-awareness and self-management. So when they have those big feelings that we know drives behaviors, they have the tools to ground themselves and access their prefrontal cortex. We also know that trauma-informed learning environments fosters academic growth, and it relates in... Actually, it equates to individuals that are emotionally healthy as adults, right? So at Kansas City Public Schools, as you guys know, we aspire to be a model trauma-informed school district, and we've implemented a number of strategies to help us in this goal, right? And so one of the things we've done is we've implemented a multi-tier student support system where we meet the comprehensive needs of students at different levels of intervention. And as you can see here, we provide interventions on a tier-one or a primary. These are interventions that every student receives. That's the warm welcome. That's the community circles that we see in our social medias that's flooding right now, that's really driving that relationship-building in our classes. It also includes a second level of intervention. These are interventions where students may need just a little bit more support. They may include interventions such as re-entry circles or mediations. And then finally, we have a third level of intervention where we provide more comprehensive or intensive services to students. These are students who may need more one-to-one interventions, who may have experienced complex social stressors, or have a history of mental illness that we're working with. So to provide these multi-tiered levels of interventions, we have brought on a robust team of student support staff. They include school counselors, clinicians, restorative justice coordinators, deans of cultures, and just this year, our family and community engagement liaisons that work collaboratively to meet the needs of our students. And we have invested a lot of time in bringing these groups together to plan how they work collaboratively. So we're breaking down the silos. Thank you. Also, we've adopted the Missouri Model for Trauma-Informed Schools. As you guys can see listed on the left, the theory of change is there. It starts with changes in knowledge, which directly relates to educating about trauma and how it manifests in the classroom and impacts learning, right? We know that changes in knowledge will lead to practice, culture, policy, and ultimately systems changes. We know that. And so we... Okay, thank you, sir. And so, as it relates to the Missouri Model, I wanted to make sure that I communicated that this model is inclusive of 12 indicators, okay, that have a range from pre-trauma to trauma-informed. And so it's kind of like a built-in rubric that kind of defines what trauma-informed schools looks like. Also, it's important to mention that the Missouri Model is not limited only to social, emotional, or behavioral interventions. It goes across the educational system and covers all domains. Everything that you've already heard about this evening correlates to an indicator in this Missouri Model. When we're talking about embedding cultural relevance into the curriculum, where we're talking about providing professional development for our staff, it correlates to indicators in the Missouri Model. So this adoption is to transform this district not only for social-emotional, but comprehensively. But tonight, I'm going to speak specifically regarding social-emotional interventions. Okay, so what I want to point out as well, as I stated, there's 12 indicators in the Missouri Model. What we've done historically is allow each school to identify their three priority indicators and provide strategies and interventions to move along the trauma continuum. However, this year, we're doing things a little bit differently. We have adopted priority indicators district-wide. So we have all schools that are working towards making progress in indicator number one, which directly relates to increasing knowledge for our educators regarding trauma and how it impacts individuals. Indicator number three, where we are focused on providing students with coping skills and educations about how to manage self-regulation and how... Opportunities to use these new skills that they are provided. And then finally, indicator number six, which is directly related to incorporating restorative practices versus punitive practices. Now, what we've done is strategically identified these indicators because they correlate with district goals, which I've listed here for you guys. And next, what I've done is kind of listed a few of the initiatives that we have currently in place to address, to achieve these goals. So as it relates to indicator one, our training, increasing knowledge and education, we have... We aspire for 100% of our staff to complete discipline at restores. We already have those dates identified for the whole year. They are already out there, and we already have schools who have staff signed up to complete it. We also specifically are... Is offering trauma training specific to school leaders, so that they understand their role in leading this trauma initiatives within their schools. As it relates to indicator number three, just really honing into our students and providing them with coping strategies and providing opportunities to use them, we have partnered with the Center for Conflict Resolution, where we are pushing into the school day to provide non-violent conflict resolution workshops for our students. Now, we've utilized the data from previous years. We know that our transition grades, seventh through ninth, have the highest number of discipline referrals and the highest number of out-of-school suspensions for our secondary. So we are focusing on that kind of cohort and providing this intervention to prevent dysregulation. We also continuously review and assess and evaluate our students' code of conduct, our student rights and responsibilities, so that we can make sure that there are restorative and trauma-sensitive interventions embedded within that manual. And lastly, some of the key performance indicators that is going to guide our work and let us know how we're measuring and how we're progressing is listed here for you. Specifically, we are really focused on decreasing the number of discipline incidents in total and by subgroups. So with these interventions that are specifically aligned to our goals and these specific indicators, we expect to see a collective impact that is going to positively impact those numbers by neg... By them dropping. Let me be clear on that. Also, just again, increasing the number of students who receive student support services. So by bringing in additional supports and services and fusing it into the school day, we are increasing those kind of tier-one and tier-two interventions that we know will have a positive impact. And with that, I am going to hand off to Courtney Adams, who is our Family and Community Engagement Coordinator.
I hope to bring this thing home. I'll be providing an overview of some of our focus areas related to family engagement, but first, I want to make sure that I frame family and community engagement, so we're working from a shared, common understanding of what meaningful engagement is and how it looks at KCPS. So you'll see in this definition, a focus on intentional partnership and shared responsibility to improve academic outcomes and support our students' healthy development. We want to... Our focus is on building capacity. So first, we want to make sure that we build the capacity of our families to support student learning at home, build the capacity of our school staff to partner effectively with our families and the community, and to create the conditions necessary for partnership. And... Excuse me. Let me just read it. Oh. Oh, can you go back? Thank you. And build the capacity of our community stakeholders to understand how to partner with our students and our families and our schools. So it's important to note that as a district, we want to shift our mindset from... Our mindset and our practices from parental involvement to family engagement. So in doing that, we'll approach our work in a slightly different way. Instead of looking at engagement as an individual responsibility, we'll understand and value the roles that our partners play and share their responsibility for student learning. We'll identify and build upon our individual and collective strengths together versus through a deficit lens and adversarial relationships. So traditional parent involvement consists of random events and activities and opportunities to include parents, but we want our engagement to be integrated into the current system, tied to activities that are already happening, and intentionally connect... Connected to learning and development outcomes. And of course, we want to get away from just looking at family engagement as being solely compliance-driven. So we've identified these five focus areas that will lead our work in effectively partnering with families, and I'll go into more detail on them. So our first... Excuse me. Our first focus area is creating the infrastructure to support district-wide engagement. As the Family and Community Engagement Coordinator, I lead the family and community engagement programs, policies, and practices from the district level, and also guide the work of our school-based FACE. That's an easy way to say it, because family and community engagement is a mouthful. So sometimes you'll hear me say FACE. But for our FACE liaisons, who are dedicated to strengthening the school-family and community partnership and focused on ensuring our families have the capacity to support student learning at home. Having this new structure ensures that best practices are being implemented across all of our schools and that our family engagement efforts are aligned with our strategic plan, our four other big rocks and other district and school-level goals. Our second focus area is holding regular capacity-building opportunities for both our staff and our families. We want our staff to be well-trained and confident in partnering with our families, so our liaisons will complete an hour and a half of professional learning each month, and will continue to have ongoing professional learning opportunities and learning bursts for our teachers, our building administrators, and our school staff. For our families, again, we want to make sure that they have the capacity to support student learning at home, so we'll hold at least four professional... Four learning opportunities at the school level and continue with parent university at the district level. Our third focus area is amplifying parent voice and leadership. So this year, this is the year, team, we will ensure that each school has a parent leadership organization, and that those organizations, or the schools that are having difficulty establishing one, have increased ongoing support from me, have support from our district advisory committee leaders like Angie mentioned, and our FACE liaisons. We'll also amplify the voices of our DAC leaders through regular communication with our school communities and the broader Kansas City community. Our fourth focus area is ensuring we have strong relationships with our families. So one of the culturally responsive practices that we'll dig deeper into in our book study is building the foundation for learning partnerships, which begin with meaningful relationships. And for those meaningful relationships to occur, our schools and district office have to be welcoming to all families. This year, we'll develop and launch a model that will establish standards for welcoming... For a welcoming, inclusive environment, looking at physical spaces, personal interactions, and our policies and practices. And our fifth and final focus area is ensuring that we're collecting data and using that data to guide our family and community engagement efforts. I'm excited that we'll be launching a family engagement dashboard that'll provide a snapshot of our school and district programs. Among other data points, we'll be tracking the number and types of capacity-building opportunities and participation in those activities. This year, we'll be establishing baselines on which we'll set future goals for family engagement programs. A few of our key performance indicators that'll let us know that we're on the right track are participant feedback indicating a change in knowledge, skills, or practice, the number of and participation in our family engagement programs to include those capacity-building opportunities, and an improved perception of the culture and climate of our schools. I'll open it up to questions about any of the five rocks.
And she's off. So, all right. That was the five rocks. Did you want to kick us off in our... Before we go to questions, Dr. Collier?
No, I feel like we've kind of talked through them a lot, and I know we have more on the agenda, and we'll have opportunities to, you know, to go in deeper and further with some of it. So we'll open up to questions at this time.
Okay. Well, let me start over here. Oh, Dr. Jones, you don't ever get to go first. Go ahead, Dr. Jones.
And may I suggest, just to make it easier on our presenters, if we could have the questions per each rock? And we'll start with literacy.
Okay. So if you have a literacy question, go ahead.
This is actually just a comment, and it's more so two-for-one, the literacy and the math. I think it would be very helpful for parents when we get the eye-ready results and we get the... Kind of the performance or progress reports a couple of times a year, it would be great to get sort of a breakdown of what it means for a kid who may not be scoring very highly or on grade level for a particular area. So we don't know what diagrams and, you know, the different things you guys know about literary, you know, structures or things like that, but just some quick tips. One form of engagement, I think, could be breaking it down for a parent. What does it mean if your kid is not scoring well here? In plain language, because the language that comes with the eye-ready report is very technical, and you need to be like a teacher to understand it. But if we could get just, hey, here are a few things you can work on with your student at home, after school or on the weekend, to build this skill in math or this skill in literacy, I think that's a way to engage parents in that process.
That is a fantastic suggestion. Ms. Adams and I will be collaborating to... Because they'll be sending out the family newsletters, and that's a great piece of information on how we share data with our families, as well as what that means and what to do at home. So all of that will connect in the family newsletter.
Mr. Barker, did you have a literary? Okay. Literacy or...
Yeah.
Ms. Buckner, you get to go first.
Okay. Okay, so first thing is, I don't know who this feedback is for, and I think there's a lot of valuable information. I don't know if this is for Mr. Hogan or for you and Mr. Hogan, Dr. Collier, but when we have big chunks of information like this, I would like for us to pause and allow for questions in between, just for people even listening in. I think in addition to giving information, we have to be able to process it, especially as a board. So I would appreciate that moving forward. I think also, we have some teachers that are already... Already have the letters endorsement, correct?
We have teachers that have... Pre-K teachers that have completed both volumes of letters, and we have a whole cohort of teachers that have completed volume one, but there are two volumes, so they'll be going on to volume two this year.
Okay, so one thing that I'm really interested in is having the data, the comparative data amongst teachers that have completed the letters training in classrooms, you know, against teachers who have not. I want to know, like, if it's working, like, with, you know, how well it's working. So I would just love to see that. And then also, there's a lot going on. The big rocks are big. And I'm thinking about our teachers, right? And so I'm really interested in seeing the PD schedule. So do administrators have the autonomy to create their own PD schedule? What does that look like? I need clarity on.
So we do have a professional development schedule, so we have a professional development schedule for our Wednesdays each month, and then we also have professional development on Tuesdays and Thursdays that our curriculum and instruction staff do after school. So we have a couple of different professional development opportunities for teachers, and then we also have the letters training that happens during the day, so our teachers are pulled out for that training during the day. So we do have... We probably... And we have... I think we do have one schedule with all of that, so we just need to share that with you.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Barker.
Yeah, and I was digging, and I wholeheartedly concur that chunking this up a little bit would have been good, or better, I should say, speaking of literacy. So I want to understand for our ELL students, how you break this into understandable chunks, right? Because if you're learning the language, literacy is much more difficult in trying to get to the points that you're doing, the 15-minute reads or all the next steps. And similarly with parents, right? I mean, if they can't comprehend the language, how are we ever going to get beyond just the classroom? So what... I see, I think, one component here on Slide 28, but what are we doing for our ELL students and the populations that are supposed to support them as we empower them to go home and continue reading? I'm not sure if this is an errant question or...
I'm going to bring... I'm going to ask you to come back to the podium, please. I'm gonna bring, I'm gonna ask you to come back to the podium, please. So we are collaborating with Allison Heil and her department around that as well. Our ELL, many of our ELL teachers are being trained in letters because that foundation applies across all languages.
Can you tell us what letters is?
Letters is, oh, gosh, now I'm on the spot and nervous. Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling, I'm sorry, yes. So that, that will help. And in that training, it's brought up a lot, like, no matter what language is spoken here, some foundations and how you can connect it to the language spoken at home or the, the native language.
Uh, one suggestion is something that actually came up three years ago. If we can empower parents to learn the language as well, you dramatically impact the ability for the student to grow beyond that. And one of the suggestions that was made to me in a community conversation was, can we teach our multilingual families English as maybe an after-hours thing? And vice versa, can we provide opportunities for community members to come and learn alternative languages as kind of an extension to our, our methods?
Yes, our International Welcome Center, they actually provided classes last year, and they're continuing this year for language acquisition for our non-English-speaking families. And I was just going to say, the three Ls was, is was actually introduced to us by the, um, the, the Language Services Department. This is, this was a strategy or tool that they were using that our curriculum team learned of, and now we are using it district-wide, but that initiated with our Language Services team.
Yeah, and one thing I'd like to add about that is part of the math endorsement is a three Ls in mathematics piece that the Council of Great City Schools is working out in conjunction with the work we've already done with three Ls in literacy. So we're really excited to have that as part of the endorsement, but it also aligns with our focus on literacy in every content area. Oh, great.
Okay, any more questions on liter, okay, Ms. Ford?
It's kind of like a literacy and math combined, and it kind of builds off of Mr. Barker's question about our ELL students and really thinking about, I guess, all of the subgroups, kind of as, as a broader group, and just kind of asking, like, what was the intentionality or conversations about improving academic outcomes for our subgroups with math and literacy specifically?
Well, I can't necessarily speak to everything that happened prior to coming here. What I would hope to see and what we hope to reiterate to teachers is that differentiation is something that should happen across all content areas. And so we want teachers to understand how to do that effectively to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students. We know that adult learning precedes student learning. And so really, this is an opportunity for teachers to learn. We don't want them to feel like we're expecting everything to be done correctly at this point. That's why there's so much professional development. So we know that this is an opportunity. How do we look at the data and make sure that all of our students are being successful? That's really at the heart of equity, so we really intend to prioritize that this year.
Okay, I think that covered literacy and nu, and math. The next one is professional development? Oh, culture, is that next? Okay. Culturally Responsive Teaching and Practices. Do I see any questions, Mr. Barker?
Well, relating to literacy, I think we should probably expand this teaching opportunity to the state legislature, just a suggestion. But seriously, I guess my question's around kind of the planning and how some of this efforts coordinates with our CBAs and how have we worked with unions to make sure that we're not pressing too much on all the different fronts and overwhelming, I think the question that was asked earlier, all of our staff, what's going, what's going on, obviously the topic and subject matter is important, but how do we find that balance or how have we found that balance?
Absolutely. So we have been in some talks with Jason Roberts, our AFT president, and then as, as part of the planning around all of this, because we definitely want to make sure that we are abiding by our negotiations and staying within the CBA. So we work pretty closely with Jason on all of our professional development endeavors.
I was just gonna add, most of the culturally responsive teaching and practices training that's for teachers, though, it falls within the, um, the outlined schedule that was created during negotiation. So we're not adding additional time for that piece. It's, it's fitting in, we've allotted that one Wednesday a month, the fourth Wednesday of each month, to cover that. So it's not additional time for teachers for that particular piece.
Absolutely.
Ms. Buckner?
I'm really excited about this. Similar to the trauma-informed strategic plan on, like, we know where we want to go with this, I think it would be beneficial to have this with culturally responsive teaching, what that looks like for our district and on the, if we are an ideal district, like, what would it look like to be culturally responsive district? So I would like a trajectory of, like, we doing a book study this year, what does it look like next year? And that would require an audit of where we are right now.
I think we can do that. Ms. Cortez?
So first, June, you should just go ahead and notice up those three dates for the family and community sessions as, for board attendance as well. But really, I guess my question is, how are we, how are we communicating with the community about this opportunity? I think it, this would be a great way to not only bring families into conversation, but all of those folks that we interact with in the community who say, what's going on at KCPS? We want to, we want to be involved, right? They don't know what that means, but they hear about us and they see the momentum. I think this would be a great opportunity to bring them into a relationship with us through content.
Absolutely.
So I'd really encourage, I mean, let's get the, not only get the word out, but let's be multipliers of that. Let's, let's have these be so big, you got to split it into multiple sessions.
Absolutely, that would be fantastic. So working in conjunction with our Communication and Marketing Department to make sure that we're making this kind of a, a big splash, so we're getting, you know, want to make sure that our community knows about it, that they're engaged in it, as well as our families, so that we can really make this a big, a big deal and make sure that we're engaging with them authentically. We might even need to bring in some community members to talk about, how do we, how do we engage the community on a broad spectrum? So I'm getting some ideas around that as well. So definitely want to make this a big, a, a big thing for Kansas City public.
I, I also think it's a great opportunity, after hearing the folks from R.J. and Associates talk about what's going to happen in Jeff City, it's a great opportunity to demythologize a lot of the, you know, kind of the, the language that's out in the community about education. Let's just talk about what we actually are thinking about, what we're doing, why we're doing it, what we believe the effect will be, what the grounding of that is. And, I mean, this is a great text to, to do that from.
Right.
So, I mean, I, I, I just think, big opportunity sitting in front of us to, to teach.
Yeah, welcome any input that any board members might have on how we might be more authentically engaging with our community would be fantastic. Thank you for that.
Go ahead, Ms. Buckner.
Okay, last one. I see on the Family Community Plan, there's a pending facilitators, TACBN, or the CCE Committee, okay?
Actually, I, I did have your name down there, and then I didn't think that that was a really good thing to do before we had actually confirmed it, so.
Gotcha.
Absolutely. Definitely.
Okay, I think we are now to?
Can I, um, just, I want to follow up on the question. Ms. Ford asked about the subgroups, and so culturally responsive teaching is one of, that, we, we selected that particular approach because it is designed to really meet and address the needs of culturally diverse and linguistically diverse students. And so that's why we chose that. And so that's definitely an area of focus for us when we think about our student body, our student demographics, 90% students of color, many of our students speaking English as a second language. We definitely felt like this was the most appropriate educational approach for our school system, and so that's really why we selected that.
Okay, let's go to social emotional wellness. Do I see any? Uh, Mr. Barker, why don't you kick us off?
Um, this is amazing, continuously, obviously supportive of this to the best of, of all, I think, all of our abilities. How can we engage other partners here, right? Because the onus of all of this work is falling on KCPS, and it seems like we're yelling at the wind when everyone else outside of us isn't doing nearly enough. And so how, or what factor do we include in here to make more friends?
Oh, I think we have a lot of friends, actually. So I just highlighted a couple of the indicators, like, I believe it's indicator 10 is a trauma-sensitive environment, also is, has a robust community partnerships. And so we do rely on our community partnerships to help us with this. Like, I was just emailing Ms. Nays and Ms. Adams before coming up here, we have a partnership with Alive and Well Communities, where specifically they're going out and into the community to drive this work and provide education and these opportunities. We also partner with, who is it? Matty Rhodes and doing our trauma work in our buildings, they provide some, um, some programming. So we're having these partnerships, even in our parent meetings at some of our schools, caregivers as, uh, caregivers as partners. So what trauma-informed strategies we're implementing in schools and what it could look like in the home.
Sorry, I, I know, I, I definitely applaud that. What I mean is, how do we expand those partnerships that we are creating and, and mobilizing or activating to get more priority when it comes to their higher-up structure, whether that's the city, the county, the state, the federal government? Because I think that's, that's what I'm looking at, is not enough focus and attention, right? These are marginal components of major budgets here.
Right.
And how can we continue to use our abilities and, and the policies we put in place to empower others?
Well, I, I don't know. But I would influence you all to use your influence, and every platform, to be quite honest, that I have, I'm pushing this work and this messaging. But you are right, local legislation and just putting some power behind it would be amazing. And I think as we spearhead this work and they see the impact, then that's when we get the ball rolling, and, and hopefully we'll be first dibs.
And let me say that the, the Kansas City Health Department's doing a great job focusing on some of these issues.
Yes, I, I concur.
I hear there's a great leader there.
I concur, I concur, yes.
And actually, everywhere, I've, I've gone quite a few places, quite a schedule, speaking, and I've been sharing our five big rocks really everywhere that I've gone, and we've already had so many people express an interest in partnering with us in this work. And that's actually how we decided to add on that community-family piece, in that we were going to do it for families, but we said, let's open it up to the others in the community as well, because so many people started saying, hey, we want to be a part of that. And then just even internally in our system, prior to rolling this out to the board and the community, Dr. Davis and I met, met and sat down with Mr. Roberts, our union president, and he was a, an excellent thought partner with us in that process, looking through all the big rocks, giving us feedback. And so we really feel good about where we are as a system as we move these agendas and these initiatives forward.
All right, I think you are done. We're a little behind, so I'm kind of going to keep things rolling here. We have one more, parent and family engagement. Well, Courtney, you were trying to, you know, get us out of here, but, yeah.
I do, it, it doesn't have to be answered right now. I'm always thinking about, when we're thinking about family and community engagement, I love your whole approach and your distinction between involve and engagement. I am always thinking about how we are ensuring consistency from school to school. So I would love to hear later, at another time, just how you are thinking about that for this year as a big rock.
Okay. I think, part of that I can answer now, and it's the way that we've kind of changed the reporting structure for the school-based liaisons and making sure that I am guiding the work and setting certain standards and expectations that'll be met at all of our buildings.
Ms. Cortez?
So I love this plan. I'm excited about the idea that we are going to deliver that consistently across the district. I feel like there's one concept missing. I think it's implicit, but I'd encourage you to think about making it explicit.
Okay.
And that's trust. I think, you know, we've had so much breakdown between the trust in institutions and families, and I know we see it play out in our buildings, I hear about it, you know, across the education continuum, but creating, you know, the confidence in our teachers and our staff and creating the confidence in our families, that they're all there for the same reason.
Right.
And that there's, that there is kind of rebuilding that trust. I think without that, all of the other pieces kind of are easy, too easy to fall away, so.
Yeah, thank you, I think that's certainly valid.
Um, in the same vein of consistency and trust, Ms. Ford, I hear you with consistency, and I think that has been lacking with our parent and family engagement. Some schools have organizations and some don't. I think we should caution against cookie cutter, because the parent organization should represent the culture and the needs and desires of the families in that neighborhood. And so I think the downfall with parent organizations in the past, where there's not the trust and then the investment, is that we, we try to place these cookie cutter organizations in each school hoping for consistency, and we get a lack of investment. And so I, I am really interested on how we help organizations within each school feel authentic, so that we have more engagement.
I agree 100%. That's the messaging that I've been sharing with the liaisons and our District Advisory Committee, is to let the parents, you're, you're co-designing with the parents, and you want to be responsive to what their needs are and their desires are in terms of how they get involved and lead and help make decisions in the organization. So the, the type of structure I've shared with them can be very flexible, depending on their interests, their capacity, and how they want to get involved with the, with their school. So we've decided, we've had several conversations, Ms. Wolfsey was a part of those, Dr. Collier, Dr. Davis, and some, and our DAC committees, like, do we at the district determine what parent organizations look like at every school? And the decision that we came up with was, no, we'll let the parents determine what that is for them. And we'll just make sure that we provide support on an ongoing basis, and then work with the liaisons and me and the DAC to whatever the organization looks like, whatever you call it, however it functions, that you have the support from us.
Thank you, I could do a backflip on that one.
Mr. Barker?
Uh, I, I wholeheartedly agree with my, my colleagues on, on all of this subject matter, because this is critically important, that if we don't do this correctly, very soon, it will, without a doubt, tank us and all of the successes we've gained so far. The one component that I would suggest, inclusion, is a school finance component. Anytime that somebody says, I'm mad at you, and I'm a taxpayer, I pay money to this district and I get this outcome, oftentimes, no one really understands how we do it. They don't see end to end, right? I want an idea, I need a playground fixed, and by the time that I get the playground, my kid's out of that school. And so this was one of the reasons why I think this board supported the IMPACT program, which were the micro grant things. And I think that is a great example and opportunity for folks to expand with parents, family, community engagement, to understand school finance. This is such a huge budget, and I know, having gone to at least four or five sessions of the Parent Power Lab, that's a critical component that they focus on, to make sure folks understand how the money comes in, what it's spent on, how you impact that, how you set priority, that has to be a critical component of this. And I know we've set things in motion through the Finance Committee about educational opportunities. I, I just, that's critical here that I think needs to be added.
Heard and received. Maybe that could be a topic for a district-wide parent university. Yeah, open to it.
I have one more, and this is more overall for future. Also, doesn't have to be answered right now, but I think as we go throughout the year and we get updates on the five rocks, I would love to continue to hear more about just accountability, with, whenever there's something new, I'm always interested in that. And then also from an evaluation piece, the five is a small number, it is a lot that we're doing, and so just thinking about evaluating how we know, like, what's working, what's not, and what caused certain actions to move. So I would love to just hear more about that within our updates throughout the year. So I would love to just hear more about that within our updates throughout the year.
I think that brings this part, the five rocks, to a close. Thank you so much. Dr. Collier, you have one more.
Okay, we are now at the Kansas City, Missouri Proposed Incentive Policy Changes, and that discussion will be led by Kathleen Pointer, our Senior Policy Strategist.
Good evening. I know it's nine o'clock and we're about to talk tax incentives, so bear with me. Dr. Davis, can you help me when I signal?
Hold one second, Ms. Pointer. So just really, if you wouldn't mind giving your full attention to this, this is such an important part of what we do. And I just really want to make sure, I know it is late, but just eat a Snickers.
So before we jump into the proposed changes coming out of City Hall around tax incentives, I wanted to ground us all in the board policy that you all currently have around tax incentives. So the superintendent shall neither cause nor allow KCPS staff, employees, independent contractors, or other KCPS representatives to promote, support, or sponsor development proposals that place KCPS as a taxing jurisdiction dependent on revenue derived from property taxes and fiscal jeopardy. Without limiting the above and based on analysis and information available at the time of the projects and proposals, the superintendent shall not cause or allow KCPS to support development projects or proposals that will not provide sustained economic growth for the KCPS community or that do not advance the mission of KCPS. Support projects or proposals for tax incentives and/or tax abatements unless it is clear such projects or proposals would not be undertaken but for the public assistance of tax abatements to free direction or taxes or other statutory incentive measures. Support development projects or proposals where the abatements or incentives exceed the length of time reasonably necessary for the project. Support development projects or proposals that do not provide KCPS with payments in lieu of taxes in an amount sufficient to offset the additional cost to KCPS as a result of the project. And fail to cooperate with or consider the positions of the similarly situated taxing jurisdictions on development projects requesting tax incentives when analyzing the rationale for the requests or development projects and proposals. So before we move on to the proposed changes, why does KCPS have a board policy around incentives? We are a taxing jurisdiction. Most of our budget is funded by property tax revenue. KCPS knows that tax incentives can be a valuable tool for cities and states to attract and grow businesses and to promote redevelopment in distressed neighborhoods. But without proper controls and oversight, these tax breaks can also be harmful to communities due to the loss of potential public revenues that go to public schools like us, that go to the public library, that go to the community mental health fund. While some tax revenues would not have been generated if incentives were not granted, Kansas City has offered longer terms of tax incentives and at higher levels than many of our peer communities. This has raised concerns that the city over incentivizes many projects, thereby diverting critical resources away from schools, libraries, infrastructures, and other public services. Currently, we get a report every year from the city that tells us how much has been abated. It's about 40 million, 37 million to be exact, last year. That is about a quarter of the local property tax revenues that's collected within our boundaries. Best practice indicates this should probably be no more than 10%. You know, I threw together a couple of little things with talking with our blueprint team. With an additional 10 million every year, we could do all of the following. We could have instrumental music starting in elementary schools. We could expand science offerings for K-12. We could implement more project-based learning opportunities at all of our high schools. We could expand elementary world language offerings. And we could have pre-K in all of our elementary schools. With an additional 11 million every year, we could increase teacher pay across the board. So I would like us to move on to the proposed, oh, go back, to the proposed ordinance. So on August 11th, it was a Thursday, Mayor Lucas introduced a slate of four different ordinances all coming together at the same time. One is a proposed bond that would be placed on the November ballot. It's a $175 million bond. It's a no tax rate increase bond. 50 million of that would go towards housing. That bond has passed, that proposal to put it on the ballot has passed. KCPS testified in support of that. We would like to see more housing creation. We would like to see more truly affordable housing creation specifically with funding out of the city's housing trust fund. This bond money should go to the city's housing trust fund. The mayor has also moved forward a proposal about ADUs, accessory dwelling units. KCPS has not really weighed in on that proposal. Staff does not have any significant thoughts on that. The other two proposals are ordinance 220700 and ordinance 220701. Ordinance 220700 passed council last week. It's changed the definition of affordable in incentivized projects. So currently, when a developer comes forward and asks for a tax break, they have been required to set aside a certain percentage of units at an extremely affordable level, 10% of the units in the project, and then 10% of the units at an affordable level, what the city has deemed affordable. They have changed that to 20% of units at affordable. So they got rid of the extremely affordable units that developers will now be required to include in projects that are receiving public subsidy. The rate at which they set it now is 20% of units at 60% MFI, that's median family income. That's $1,200 for a one-bedroom apartment. So KCPS expressed concerns with that ordinance, partly because we know many of our families cannot live in a $1,200 one-bedroom apartment. These would be being built with potential school district revenues. We also know that many of our teachers cannot afford to live in a $1,200 one-bedroom apartment. The starting teacher salary at KCPS falls below that 60% MFI range. I will also note, we have one of the higher starting teacher salaries in the metro area. So there are many teachers across the city who would likely not be able to afford to live in these apartments. There was a lot of community backlash about this ordinance. Lots of people expressed concern besides the school district about this. LISC, KC tenants, the Promoting Equitable Neighborhoods Initiative, which is part of you and I, all expressed concerns about this ordinance. So that passed. KCPS did ask for them to hold the ordinance, so we would have time to brief all of you, but they did not do so. The second ordinance, ordinance 220701, changes the overall policy around incentives. This one did get held until September 14th, which KCPS is very grateful for. We have been having conversations with the mayor's office, which we appreciate, with council members, which we appreciate, but we do think there needs to be more time. So this ordinance would change how incentives move through City Hall and through the city, essentially. And so it would establish a process for awarding standard incentive packages to residential office and industrial development that meet certain criteria and directing the city manager to take certain acts to implement the standard incentive packages. We will go over the specifics of the separate packages in a moment. There is one piece of this legislation that is especially concerning to us as it relates to KCPS board policy, and that is the removal of financial analysis to determine if incentives are needed on a project. It says that state statute would still be in effect with financial analysis, so not all financial analysis would be removed. Based on a conversation I had with the Economic Development Corporation yesterday, only TIF, which is one of the alphabet soup of agencies that grant tax incentives, would still require financial analysis. So for the most part, financial analysis would go away. We, if you could move to the next slide, we'll go over the different packages. So this first one is residential. You'll see the map where these targeted incentive packages would go. I will note that it is primarily within KCPS boundaries and not within other school district boundaries. Tier one is the dark green. That would be 10 years of property tax abatement at 100%, meaning the school districts and taxing jurisdictions would receive no revenues for the first 10 years. This is a change. It has been, for the most part, starting packages have started at 75% so that we could collect at least some revenues from the initial start of the project. Tier two is 10 years at 75%. And then tier three is 10 years at 50. There isn't, it's mostly tier one within our boundaries. For, oh, if you could go back to residential, sorry. To qualify for this, some of the things that the developer would have to do would have to set aside 20% of their units at that 60% MFI, so that is the $1,200 for a one-bedroom. It would be a minimum of 100 units if it was downtown, 50 units anywhere else. A parking ratio at or below one space unit. Green building standards comparable with lead silver or equivalent. I have asked to be informed what equivalent means. That has not been clarified yet. Inclusion of alternative transit options and ground floor retail along at least 50% of street frontage. Next, please. So this is for commercial development. You'll notice this is mostly downtown in the plaza, two areas of Kansas City that have received substantial public subsidy over the years through property tax abatement. This would be 15 years at 75%. To qualify, it would be a minimum of 200,000 square feet of new construction, a minimum of 20 stories if downtown, a CBA required, that's a community benefit agreement, and we'll talk about that a little bit as well. Green building standards comparable with lead silver or equivalent. Again, we've asked for what equivalent means and are hoping to get that clarified. And parking costs excluded for any parking in excess of 1.5 spots. With commercial, I would like to point out, earlier this year, there was a project that went through 27th and Grants. We briefed you all on it. It was a life insurance company that was moving about five blocks down Main Street, and they were seeking a property tax abatement to build a new office tower. The school district felt that it was over incentivized because the financial analysis told us it could be done in 10 years at 75%. However, it went forward at 10 years at 70% and five years at 30. I have asked, I asked the city manager if under this new, under this new package, which would be 15 years at 75, higher than the 10 years at 70 and five years at 30, if it would qualify for this. And I was told yes. So that would indicate that there is going to be over incentivizing happening here. If it could be done in 10 years at 70% and five years at 30, it seems unnecessary to allow it to have 15 years at 75. Every dollar that is over incentivized means it's a dollar that's not coming into our classrooms that could be. Next, please. Industrial. Industrial is the one staff has the least concerns with. It's 15 years at 75% in the dark blue, which is mostly within our boundaries. KCPS has not been opposing very many industrial projects. We don't see very many of them, to be honest with you. And so this one is in a significant concern. We would prefer for it to be at the 10-year level. We think 10 years is more appropriate as a starting off point, but this one, we do not have significant concerns about. So before I take questions, how did this, how did they create all of this proposal? About two years ago, there was an incentive deal called BlueScope that came forward. It was a company that had been receiving property tax abatement for about 13 years, 20 years, and they wanted 13 more. Dr. Bedell, at the time, was very frustrated with this ask, felt it was inappropriate. You know, they had been receiving property tax abatement for many years. They were threatening to leave the city if they didn't get it. And essentially, he called their bluff. The project did not go forward, and the company is still here in Kansas City today, fully on the tax rolls, which we appreciate. But after that, there was renewed conversation around tax incentive reform, treating Kansas City Public Schools the same as the other school districts in the area, et cetera. An incentive reform ordinance passed, that's that 70% for 10 years and 30% for five. KCPS appreciated that effort, but did have concerns that it didn't go far enough. There were a lot of exceptions written into that. We were told by folks at City Hall that the next step would be reevaluating the advanced KC scorecard. That is a scorecard used to rate development, trying to decide if it deserves public subsidy. A group of people were convened to work on this. I was a member, I was the Kansas City Public Schools representative on the board. There were about 20 community members, development folks, all who came together for about a year and a half to work on this. Those conversations stopped in the spring. We didn't hear anything for several months, and then we were presented with this a few weeks ago. KCPS has sent a preliminary response with thoughts on this proposal. It's been shared with all of you in a board packet. I'll go over some of the high-level comments right now, and then we can move on to questions. So KCPS is open to these levels. Only east of TruSt is the only place where we feel like it's appropriate to start having these conversations. We think it is important to prioritize the third and fifth districts. Incentivizing downtown, midtown, the plaza at such high rates is going to equal developers continuing to focus in those areas. We do not think that, you know, we have significant concerns about the elimination of a third-party financial analysis, and we continue to have questions about what a streamlined process would look like as far as granting these package deals. So I know that was a lot, and I know I've been emailing you all things for weeks, so I'm ready for all of your questions. Thank you for bearing with me.
First, thank you for the presentation. This was important. Unfortunately, this, we couldn't talk about this at the last meeting, so we wanted to make sure that we got to it tonight. This is the first time that this board has been briefed as an entire board. This will be our first time to ask clarification questions of Ms. Pointer, and then for, if we want to dialogue about it as well. So I'm just kind of keeping an eye on the time. Maybe give about 10 minutes total, five minutes questions, maybe five minutes dialogue if that works. And I won't cut off dialogue, but I will open it up for questions since this is a new subject for, I think, some of you as well.
Am I understanding correctly that if this ordinance passes, this is how all projects will be approved moving forward, or just certain ones?
So if this ordinance passes, it says that deals, that development projects meeting a certain set of criteria. So it's not listed out here, it shows the different levels. It's in the packet I emailed you, but it includes 20% of, like for residential, that's the 20% of units at that $1,200 range, et cetera. With commercial, it's the 200,000 square feet of new construction and that kind of. And then for industrial, it's, you know, basically just located in that target area with a minimum of 250,000 square feet new construction. We do not fully understand what a streamlined process means. There has been a lot of conversation in the community about administrative approval. They have since struck the word administrative from the ordinance. However, when people come forward with a development ask, they have a slew of agencies they can go to to get. You can go to TIF, you can go to LCR, you can go to PIA. All of these agencies operate differently. KCPS has made the request that we would like to know what a streamlined approval looks like for each of these agencies. I spend a lot of time going to all of them, and I can tell you, they're all doing things their own way. So we are still waiting on that to better understand what this process would look like, where taxing jurisdiction input can come, where public input can come, what role any boards and commissions do actually have to say no to a project. We've been told the legal mechanisms are still being worked out.
Mr. Abarka?
Couple of comments and then whatever the next thing is. First, the industrial side, I will comment in my community on, in that very much blue area, is one of the largest national truck producers. So I'd be wary of- So I'd be wary of just ignoring that state because they definitely are a major employer, job access, all these bonus points, we're not getting revenues from them, probably. So keep that in mind. The other thing is, as we talk about third and fifth district, you leave out significant portions of the Latino community and then very much needed development in that area as well. I don't know how you tactfully and easily say third, fifth, and parts of the fourth, but that is another area that I would suggest contemplating how we navigate that, too.
We've, to address that, we've mostly talked about it in terms of, and I know that there are members of the Latino community living west of Truist. We have mostly focused on east of Truist because currently 90% of the abated dollars within KCPS boundaries are going to projects west of Truist. So we see a significant difference between east of Truist and west of Truist when it comes to these kinds of conversations.
Agreed, and the Latino community gets left out of that completely. So I think that's, that's my point there. Wholeheartedly agree and understand, but in the Northeast, where I have been a neighborhood president, I've said, where's our development? When is it our turn? So I think that incentive also needs to be focused and baked into this. I, I implore all of our colleagues beyond our, I think, Government Affairs Committee to really dig into this and really suggest we, as a collaborative group here, come up with strength and priorities here and to help find balance as well as advocacy points to make sure that we advance our city, but don't do it on the backs of just our tax, our taxing jurisdictions. So I know it's 9:30 or whatever, but let's, let's figure this out.
Okay, I'm looking down the dais. Ms. Cortez, or do you? I, I know you do. I have one question, if I could go before you do. And so I know you've laid out kind of the context and what we have. Can you shed any light as to why the city felt that we needed to go here at this point in time?
I think that there has been a feeling from some people in the city that it's not easy to get development done in Kansas City. I'll note that in the last several years, there have, there's been more sunshine on development in Kansas City, partly courtesy of KCPS. I'll note, most of the deals that we have been able to get better deals on, including BlueScope, have come through public dialogue. There has also been more advocacy, again, from the Promoting Equitable Neighborhoods Coalition at UNI, and then, of course, KC Tenants has become very vocal and active in these spaces as well.
I'm going to let you have the last word on this, so I'm going to say my part right now. I am trying to keep this short and sweet because I could go on forever. I'm having deja vu. I was one of two people who spoke on behalf of Kansas City Public Schools when Mayor Slay James actually tried to put forth an initiative for incentive reform. I also participated in a task force that lasted over two years, went dark, and then all of a sudden, an initiative that was actually worse for us came out. So this is now time number two for moi. I do feel like, in my opinion, this ordinance is a big step backwards for us. And I, I think we have a responsibility as the Board of Directors of a taxing jurisdiction that depends upon our local tax revenues in particular, to ensure that we're, I want to say this very clearly, so if anybody's out there listening, I am not anti-development. Because guess what? Economic development drives tax revenues to this taxing jurisdiction, but I don't want to put $1 more than I absolutely need to do to get that return on our investment. And I think that is our fiduciary responsibility as we sit in the seats, and I'll just kind of keep it to that.
And I'll say, too, on all of this, this is, incentives can be granted in other areas that are not included within these maps. This is just changing the floor, right? And it's raising the floor from where it is now. This is not the ceiling, but it's raising the floor to levels at 100% that we have not seen in many years. And so that is part of the conversation that we're having, too, is we're moving further away from trying to bring those levels down. I'll also note that currently, you know, KCPS has not opposed, as long as I've been doing this work, I think when Shannon Jacks was doing this work as well, any projects in the west of Truist, I mean, east of Truist, sorry. And so, you know, right now, if a developer wants to come and build something in the third district, in the fifth district, in an area that needs it, perhaps also in the fourth, they're not encountering resistance from Kansas City Public Schools, even without this in place.
Ms. Cortez.
So I'm going to become that word salad person tonight. For those of you who know me, I come from a development background, right? I'm about as far from anti-development as you can get and be involved with KCPS, I think. I, I think there's a couple of observations I would make. I think they're shifting the playing field to keep us fighting the wrong battle. And I would encourage us to think about not just fighting back on the technicalities. I think we do have to respond to the technicalities of the proposal, but by only responding to the technicalities of the proposal, it fits the narrative that KCPS is anti-development, right? We're trying to pick off development here, pick off development there, when in reality, what we're seeking from the city is rational public policy and rational economic development. I believe that, you know, there's no perfect framework for knowing where the, the, the last incremental impactful dollar is. It's an imprecise process. And yet, we do know that where, you know, we should be able to measure or at least engage in dialogue about, if we, if we invest in X number of projects within a sub- geography, it should generate how much new revenue independent of those incentive projects. And instead, what this policy does is essentially say, if you want to develop in Kansas City, you are now guaranteed incentives, you know, once you're doing a project of any scale. That, that, so, so here, here are the things I think we ought to consider in reframing what I think is an extremely non-strategic set of incentive proposals that the mayor has brought forward. I would say that these are about as politically expedient of something that I've seen reactive or manipulative, depending on your perspective, but not strategic in any way, right? What is the strategy trying to achieve? We know, I know, from my work with contractors, real estate folks, developers, that the city's processes post-incentive are an enormous barrier to cost-effective development in Kansas City. So what we're now doing is using this minimum floor of incentives to basically fund for developers the city's inefficiencies. The city needs to address its inefficiencies in permitting, in planning, in inspections, and all of the things that delay projects in Kansas City, Missouri, that are somewhat unique in Kansas City, Missouri. Essentially, they're asking our students and our families to do that, instead of fixing their own problems. Secondly, I think, but I think when we talk about resetting the table, what's the purpose of the incentives, right? The incentives are intended to help repop, not just reemploy the suburban community into the city, it's also intended to re-establish families living in Kansas City. And I don't see anything in this incentives ordinance that talks about how we repopulate the city, how we not, and I think that the whole adjacent, the enhanced dwelling unit, I'm using the wrong terminology. I, I have had these conversations over the years with some of my development friends. It's nonsense. We have hundreds, thousands, tens of thousands of vacant lots throughout the city. All we need to do is restore density with affordable housing to start to bring families back in. Whether you're a charter advocate or you're a traditional public schools advocate, we need more kids and families living within our boundaries. The only way that happens is not by building $1,200, you know, single apartment units. That's going to bring my friends' kids who just finished college and are starting, it creates housing for our families and the families who will use our schools. So I think we need to be careful in our response of not just being a technical responder, but raising the bar on the city itself and using our platforms, in the same way that we objected to BlueScope, to object to the notion that this is only about, you know, setting some minimum level of incentives that's suddenly going to reopen the, the cash chute for development. We can do better, but our city's not going to reflect that if this is, if this is the narrow lane that we're operating in. Okay, now I'm off my soapbox.
Absolutely. Well said, Ms. Cortez, well said.
You really brought us home there. I appreciate that. Thank you for the presentation, and I believe, Dr. Collier, is that the end of your part? Okay. We're so informal here, so sorry. It's nine. That moves us on to the Board of Directors' part of the agenda, so I would like to recognize Board Treasurer Manny Abarkah.
Dr. Collier, my daughter's going to be late to school tomorrow, just want to let you know in advance. Yes, all right, let's rush through this quickly, but efficiently and effectively. All right, so our summary of revenues, expenditures, and fund balance. FY '23 initial budget was approved by the board on June 22. It is important to note, and I, and I asked our interim CFO to include these pivot points as so we can plan for the future. We have two amendments that occur in our budget system, and that incur, occurs, December of 2022 will be presented to the board for approval in February of 2023, and then again, a budget change through April 2023 will be presented to the board for approval in June of 2023. So just as you look at the full landscape of the budget, we wanted to put those benchmarks there so we know that there are opportunities that this is going to change. So looking at our revenues, Jackson County will send tax bills to property owners in October. Majority of the tax revenues are distributed in December and in Jan, in January, in terms of the revenues that we get in from those folks who are paying their property taxes. As mandated by the Missouri State Law, April 7, 1998, KCPS established an operating levy at $4.95 in FY 1999 as part of the desegregation resolution to continue to support the district's operations. Voter's approval is needed to increase the operating levy or to otherwise change it. And so this is incredibly important, as next month, we will be setting our levy, and there have been some community discussions around what we could or couldn't do around this levy and what it requires for us if we want to do more or less or whatever else. So wanted to include that component as our tax bills are undoubtedly coming, coming out, and we will certainly have engagement from our community about those values. Looking at our continued local revenue funds, the proceeds from the Folsom Development Group for the sale of Greenwood is listed on the 5651 sale of other property at $112,409. The utilities costs for that, on average, were around $5,000. That's annual, right, Ms. Thompson? So this is an area, as we look at our repurposing process, this is money coming in versus money going out. So again, something to think about broadly. Looking at our intermediate county and state lines here, county revenues will be collected in June for fines, March for the SARRU, and August for the stock insurance. For state, the basic formula revenues will be redirected to charter schools due to the equity funding bill. Excuse me, KCPS will no longer pay charter schools additional local revenues, which will account for that $14.5 million. DESI will fund the additional amount. This will free up $14.5 million in local revenues to support KCPS programs, i.e. compensation study that we just talked about, academic pilot programs, targeted tutoring, tutoring, and capital projects. So this is the result of the equity funding efforts that we all have played out since the last three years or so. Looking at our federal revenues and expenditures report here, I asked Ms. Thompson to kind of isolate for the benefit of us broadly, as well as the public. We have received $106,703,456 in federal cares, well, I'm sorry, in federal response to COVID pandemic or COVID-19 from fiscal year '21 to fiscal year '24. This is the federal dollars that we have seen that have bolstered our budget during some trying times, but also look towards expanding our operations that we are leveraging. And so that is a critical component that, as we look at the pie chart that's coming up next, you'll see if you're comparing multiple budget years, that federal line is dramatically increased compared to previous years because of these dollars. So thanks to the Biden administration and the Congress, I should say, the democratically-controlled Congress currently for pushing this money out, because this has been effectively helping us subsidize the, the changes and modifications we need for our public school system. Looking at our expenditures, changes for 12-month employee salaries and benefits, again, since we're at the beginning of the year, you'll see on the right-hand side column with the percentages, we are not going to see those fluctuate until we actually expend some of this money. But again, a lot of this is going to be salary benefits and fringe benefits. Looking at the next slide of purchased services, again, these are similarly allocated from the previous years, and the line and the percentage you'll see increase as we get more, further into our budget year. And the purchased services continued. There is a line that we wanted to denote because of its dramatic increase. You'll see property insurance for 6351 has dramatically increased over the, what was projected to be budgeted. So a budget increase in August for additional funds will be needed. Any budget will be reflected in the Amendment I as we modify this proposed budget. So looking at supplies and materials, this slide, I think I try and harp on quite a bit in, in the previous years. The supplies and materials line, in addition to the initial budget of $2.9 million for general supplies, the school supplies budget was increased by $500,000 for the first semester using ESAR funds. The administration communicated to school principals that each teacher should be allocated $250 per semester in both proactive proposals for supplies and retroactive reimbursements for our teaching staff. That is both $250 for the fall and spring semester for a total of $500, and that process has been fully communicated to, to staff. So that is definitely a big, big plus for our teachers in preparing them for the opening of schools. Looking at our capital outlay slides here, the 6597 contingency budget, this includes the 1.3-plus school impact grants that, again, focus on the school-based projects that are supposed to do community engagement and really whip up parent, community, staff-level engagements for small projects. So that is where that money is right now, and I look forward to focusing on where we're spending down as we move the, the needle forward. Looking at our expenditures by object, again, salary and benefits is our largest expenditure here. Moving on to the cash and investments, as a reminder, we are cash-rich at a certain point when we collect property taxes, we are cash-poor when we spend them down, so thus we make investments during the cash-rich times, so that when we're cash-poor, these investments make sure that we have the cash needed to maintain our, our expenses. So three securities matured during the July timeframe, total value of $20 million. UMB report at end of month decreased approximately $1.6 million. And with that, Madam Chair, I am done with my report.
Well, thank you, Mr. Abarkah. Are there any questions for the treasurer? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to ad hoc committee reports. The chair would like to recognize the Chair of the CCE Committee, Ms. Buckner.
Hi. So we met on August 18. On the agenda was an ECE, I'm sorry, an ACE update on our reconciliation statement. We did some mandate grounding, and then we revisited the initiatives that we, we did a 2122 recap. Sorry, I'm so tired. And then we ended with just discussing our 2223 priorities. And from that discussion, we named that we want to continue with DAC, having the board represented at the DAC meetings, and so we will need to sign up for that as a board. I will get an email out soon so that we can sign up for the months that we will be present, and who will be present. And then lastly, there is discussion with Mrs. Soriano McCrery, our new Chief Marketing and Communications Officer, about admin's role with CCE. about admin's role with CCE and the restructuring of the meetings and the purpose that the committee will serve.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. All right, moving right along, we're going to move on to policy and governance. We have a policy that we need to adopt, so the chair recognizes Superintendent Dr. Collier.
We do have a policy, and this is the annual, actually, it's the biannual renewal of the conflict of interest policy, the BBFA. And we do this every two years.
Do we, if we don't have the motion, because Dr. Collier doesn't have, do we need to table that one? Okay. Do you have the motion language? Okay. You read the, here, I can read it. All right, we have the proposed resolution. It is, we move the recommendation of the interim Superintendent of Schools for the Board of Directors to adopt new, updated, and/or amended administrative policies procedures that will be identified in the Board Policy Manual Appendix D, Policy Compliance. Mr. Thornton?
No, I was just going to try to clarify is that all the board members know that you guys have to do those disclosures for any kind of financial conflicts. In addition to that, what we have to do every two years is approve a ordinance or a policy saying that we have a conflict of interest policy ordinance. That's what we're doing today. So, and by doing that, then, then the other people that also needed to file that is the superintendent, myself, and Chief Financial Officer. If we do it this way and do that ordinance every two years, we can do a short form, which means we don't have to fill out, you know, a lot more paperwork. So that's the purpose of this. And like June said, this is something we have to do. The ordinance, we have to do every two years, but I think those of us that reported, I think we have to do it annually. So, so hopefully that clarifies it some. And we have a policy that explains that.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Thornton? Okay, seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to update and adopt policy BBFA, Board Conflict of Interest?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. June, please call the roll. Sorry, I'm in a substitute role tonight. Is there any debate on the motion? Seeing none, June, please call the roll.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes, the motion passes. All right, moving on to regular business items. The first order of business is cornerstones of care. The chair recognizes Superintendent Dr. Collier.
Yes, the administration recommends approval for the, of the First Amendment of the Agreement to Provide Services to Students with Special Education Needs in the Amount Not to Exceed $700,000 for school year 2022, '23. I'm tired too, I'm sorry. Cornerstones of Care is a DESI-approved private agency.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on this motion? Seeing none, June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes, the motion passes. Moving on to the Sherwood Center contract, I recognize Dr. Collier.
The administration recommends approval of the Agreement to Provide Instruction and Related Services to Students with Special Education Needs in the Amount Not to Exceed $700,000 for school year 2022, '23. Sherwood Autism Center is a DESI-approved private agency.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the motion? Seeing none, June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes. Moving on to Matty Rhodes Center, Chair recognizes Dr. Collier.
The administration recommends approval of the Service Agreement for a two-year contract in the amount of $508,000. Student support services, service coordinators will be provided to support KCPS's social and emotional support program. Eight schools will be served, namely Rogers, Wheatley, Garfield, Gladstone, Northeast Middle School, Northeast High School, James Elementary, and Garcia Elementary.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on this motion? Seeing none, June, please call the roll.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes, the motion passes. The chair recognizes Dr. Collier about Pure Ozone Inc.
The administration recommends approval of the three-year agreement to provide custodial supplies within not to exceed contract amount of $612,048.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do I see any debate? Seeing none, June, please call the roll.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes, the motion passes. I'd like to recognize Dr. Collier for the acceptance of the American Rescue Plan Grant.
The administration recommends approval to accept the grant for homeless children and youth. The grant amount of $314,171 was awarded to provide wraparound services that address multiple effects of the pandemic.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the motion? Seeing none, June, please call the roll.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes, the motion passes. I'd like to recognize Dr. Collier for the Rainbow Center contract.
The administration recommends approval of the Agreement to Provide Instruction and Related Services to Students with Special Education Needs in the Amount Not to Exceed $430,000 for school year 2022, 2023. Rainbow Center for Communicative Disorders is a DESI-approved private agency.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any debate? Seeing none, June, please call the roll.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes, the motion passes. I'd like to recognize Dr. Collier for the Stepping Stones Group.
The administration recommends approval of the Contract to Provide Substitute Staffing Services to Special Education Department. The contract amount of, of not to exceed $2,190,000 is available in Special Education Federal Grant and Operating Budget.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on this motion? Seeing none, June, please call the roll.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford? Dr. Jones? Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes, motion passes. All right, do we have a motion to approve, moving on to consent? Do we have a motion to approve the items as presented on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any, oh, there's no debate. June, please call the roll.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes, the motion passes, but don't go anywhere. We need to review the new task and action items. June, can you provide those?
They are here. So regarding charter schools, it is requested to see the charter rubrics for how schools are labeled and how schools are renewed, and what is the labeling? Is that right? Are we okay with that?
Can you say that again? I was backing up.
See the charter rubric for how schools are labeled. What is that labeling and how are the schools renewed?
Yes.
Very good.
Can I add two? One being for the first comment that we had in public, public comment to review what the compliance issue may be for the benefits of that individual and employee. And the second would be to ask Ms. Friedman when that event was she invited us to, because I don't think she got that out.
Yep. Okay, this brings us to the conclusion of our agenda for this evening. So if there's no objection, no, there's more? Oh, darn it. Okay, can you go?
Okay, let's start all over again. Big Rocks, this will be in the family newsletter for Courtney, I believe it is, for literacy and math. When parents receive the I Ready and APR reports, it would be good for the reports to be broken down or to have a breakdown for the student so that they can understand those reports. The next one is compare teachers who completed the letters training data, what the teachers' data, with teachers who have not completed the training to find out the difference between the two and is the letters working. There is another request to see the, the professional development schedule, and what does that schedule look like? Under culturally responsive teaching, what does culturally responsive teaching look like for our district? The next one is notice, oh, that's just noticed up to three days. Never mind. Wants to know how we are seeing consistency from school to school. I think this has to do with the culturally responsive and the socio-emotional aspect of the Big Rocks. Pardon me? Family engagement. Okay, I will make a note on that one.
So for all the board members, and I know a lot of those were you, Ms. Buckner, were those accurately represented in the review action? I know, it's late.
I need to follow up with you.
Okay. Fair, totally fair.
I will send them to you.
Okay, so, thank you, June. Thank you, everybody, for sticking with us. It's been a long night. This brings us to the conclusion of our agenda for this evening. So if there is no objection, the meeting is adjourned. The next meeting will be September 14 at Southeast High School. The meeting's adjourned. Oh, my Lord. I could have, you know what it was?